The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Oh Spirit of light, Ancient of days, we come to you humbly asking for your guidance as the House of Representatives engages in the most sacred task of making policies for the state of Minnesota. We ask that you guide everyone, give them the wisdom and strength they need, place it in their minds and especially their hearts. Encourage their spirits when they get tired and refresh their souls when they get weary. We pray for each of our families and communities during this COVID-19 pandemic. Help us all to continue to social distance and flatten our curve. We pray that the technology holds up during this session so that the work can be completed. Please bless the state of Minnesota and all Minnesotans as we place our laws for our state in the hands of the House of Representatives. We thank you for each representative that is here today that is giving their time and their talent to create a better Minnesota. In the name of all that is holy, amen.
The Chaplain for today is Reverend Diane Halsey from Liberty Community Church, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, the clerk will take the role, please. When you state your name, slowly and clearly state your location and present.
Aiken.
Aiken, St. Paul, present.
Aiken, St. Paul, present. Albright.
Albright, Prior Lake, present.
Albright, Prior Lake, present. Anderson.
Anderson, Barsness Township, present.
Anderson, Barsness Township, present. Becker.
Becker, Browns Valley, present.
Becker, Browns Valley, present. Bonner.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, East Bethel, present.
Barr, East Bethel, present. Baker.
Baker, Spicer, present.
Baker, Spicer, present. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, St. Paul, present.
Becker Finn, St. Paul, present. Bennett.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present. Bernardi.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present. Bierman.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bo.
Bo, Chanhassen, present.
Bo, Chanhassen, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Paul, present.
Brand, St. Paul, present. Cantrell.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, Crystal, present.
Carlson L, Crystal, present. Christensen.
Christensen, St. Paul, present.
Christensen, St. Paul, present. Claflin.
Claflin, St. Paul, present.
Claflin, St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, Mankato, present.
Considine, Mankato, present. Daniels.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present. Douth. Douth, St. Paul, present. Davids.
Davids, Preston, present.
Davids, Preston, present. Daphne.
Daphne, St. Paul, present.
Daphne, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Damuth.
Damuth, Rochester, present.
Damuth, Rochester, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present. Druskowski.
Druskowski, Winona, present.
Druskowski, Winona, present. Eklund.
Eklund, St. Paul, present.
Eklund, St. Paul, present. Edelson.
Edelson, Minnetrista, present.
Edelson.
Edelson, Minnetrista, present.
Edelson, Minnetrista, present. Elkins.
Elkins, St. Paul, present.
Elkins, St. Paul, present. Ericson.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present. Fabian.
Fabian, Roseau, present.
Fabian, Roseau, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen. Franzen.
Yeah, trying to unmute myself.
Franzen.
My computer won't.
We hear you.
Okay, well, it still says I muted. Um, I am present, Alexandria Township.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present. Freiberg.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present. Garofalo.
Garofalo, Farmington, present.
Garofalo, Farmington, present. Gomez.
Gomez, St. Paul, present.
Gomez, St. Paul, present. Green.
Green, Foston, present.
Green, Foston, present. Gressel.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmont, present.
Gunther, Fairmont, present. Haley.
Haley, Redwing, present.
Haley, Redwing, present. Halverson.
Halverson, Egan, present.
Halverson, Egan, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present. Hanson.
Hanson, St. Paul, present.
Hanson, St. Paul, present. Hassan.
Hassan, Savage, present.
Hassan, Savage, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Anoka, present.
Heinrich, Anoka, present. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present. Herr.
Herr, St. Paul, present.
Herr, St. Paul, present. Hurtas.
Hurtas, St. Boniface, present.
Hurtas, St. Boniface, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, St. Paul, present.
Howard, St. Paul, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present. Johnson.
Johnson, Isanty Township, present.
Johnson, Isanty Township, present. Jordan.
Jordan, St. Paul, present.
Jordan, St. Paul, present. Jurgens.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present. Keel. Keel. Cleavard.
Cleavard, St. Paul, present.
Cleavard, St. Paul, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katisa Waton. Katisa Waton. Koznick.
Koznick, Lakeville, present.
Koznick, Lakeville, present. Creshaw.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, St. Paul, present.
Kunish Podine, St. Paul, present. Lehman.
Lehman, Cohasset, present.
Lehman, Cohasset, present. Lee.
Lee, St. Paul, present.
Lee, St. Paul, present. Lesch.
Lesch, St. Paul, present.
Lesch, St. Paul, present. Liebling.
Liebling, Rochester, present.
Liebling, Rochester, present. Lean.
Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. Lily.
Lily, St. Paul, present.
Lily, St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, St. Paul, present.
Lippert, St. Paul, present. Listlegard.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present. Long.
Long, St. Paul, present.
Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero.
Lucero, Dayton, present.
Lucero, Dayton, present. Luick. Luick, St. Paul, present. Mahoney.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann.
Mann, St. Paul, present.
Mann, St. Paul, present. Mariani.
Mariani, St. Paul, present.
Mariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart.
Markwart, Dunn Township, present.
Markwart, Dunn Township, present. Mason.
Mason, Egan, present.
Mason, Egan, present. McDonald.
McDonald, Delano, present.
McDonald, Delano, present. Mecklen.
Mecklen, Clear Lake, present.
Mecklen, Clear Lake, present. Miller.
Miller, Prinsburg, present.
Miller, Prinsburg, present. Moeller.
Moeller, St. Paul, present.
Moeller, St. Paul, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, St. Paul, present.
Morrison, St. Paul, present. Munson.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present. Murphy, excused. Nash. Nash, St. Paul, present. Nelson M.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present. Nelson N.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present. New. New, St. Paul, present. Noor.
Noor, Minneapolis, present.
Noor, Minneapolis, present. Nornis.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present. Olson.
Olson, Duluth, present.
Olson, Duluth, present. O'Neal.
O'Neal, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neal, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Eden Prairie, present.
Palowski, Eden Prairie, present. Purcell.
Purcell, Bemidji, present.
Purcell, Bemidji, present. Petersburg.
Petersburg, Wasika, present.
Petersburg, Wasika, present. Pearson. Pearson.
Pearson, Salem Township, present.
Pearson, Salem Township, present. Pinto.
Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, Austin, present.
Poppy, Austin, present. Polston.
Polston, Lakeshore, present.
Polston, Lakeshore, present. Pryor.
Pryor, St. Paul, present.
Pryor, St. Paul, present. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present. Robbins. Robbins, St. Paul, present. Runbeck.
Runbeck's, Pines, present.
Runbeck, Pines, present. Sandell.
Sandell, St. Paul, present.
Sandell, St. Paul, present. Sansstead.
Sansstead, Hibbing, present.
Sansstead, Hibbing, present. Sauk.
Sauk, Rochester, present.
Sauk, Rochester, present. Schumacher.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present. Schultz.
Schultz, Duluth, present.
Schultz, Duluth, present. Scott.
Scott, Andover, present.
Scott, Andover, present. Stevenson.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present. Sundeen.
Sundeen, St. Paul, present.
Sundeen, St. Paul, present. Swazinski. Swazinski, St. Paul, present. Tabke.
Tabke, St. Paul, present.
Tabke, St. Paul, present. Tice.
Tice, St. Cloud, present.
Tice, St. Cloud, present. Tarkelson.
Tarkelson, Hanska, present.
Tarkelson, Hanska, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, St. Paul, present.
Vang, St. Paul, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present. Waslowick.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present. West.
West, Blaine, present.
West, Blaine, present. Winkler. Winkler, St. Paul, present. Walgamott.
Walgamott, St. Paul, present.
Walgamott, St. Paul, present. Jean Jay.
Jean Jay, St. Paul.
Jean Jay, St. Paul, present. Jean T.
Jean T, St. Paul, present.
Jean T, St. Paul, present. Yuakim.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, St. Paul, present. Keel.
Keel, Hammond Township, present.
Keel, Hammond Township, present. Katisa Waton.
Katisa Waton, St. Paul, present.
Katisa Waton, St. Paul, present.
A quorum is present. The clerk will read the Journal of the preceding day.
Journal of the House Special Session 2020, Third Day, St. Paul, Minnesota, Tuesday, June 16, 2020.
If there is no objection, further reading of the Journal will be dispensed with and the Journal will be approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Hearing no objection, the Journal is approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Reports of standing committees and divisions. A copy of this order of business is online. If there is no objection, we will... The reports will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the reports are adopted. Second reading of House files.
Second reading of House file number 18.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 33.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 36.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 39.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 63.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 97.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 124.
Second reading.
Second reading of House file 133.
Second reading. Second reading of Senate files.
Second reading of Senate file 15.
Second reading. Introduction and first reading of House files. Following House files have been offered for introduction today. The Chief Clerk will give them their first reading.
Introduction and first reading of House files 143 through 151.
First reading of House files 143 through 151. Messages from the Senate.
Messages from the Senate. Madam Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate files herewith transmitted. Senate file number 1, Senate file number 3, Senate file number 5, Senate file number 7, Senate file number 47, Senate file number 49, and Senate file number 104.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading of Senate file number 1, an act relating to public safety. The bill is being referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. First reading of Senate file number 3, an act relating to public safety. The bill is being referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. First reading of Senate file number 5, an act relating to public safety. The bill is being referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Reform Finance and Policy Division. First reading of Senate file number 7, an act relating to education finance. Kunish Podine moved that Senate file number 7 and House file number 36 now on the General Register be referred to the Chief Clerk for comparison.
Without objection, so ordered.
Okay, that motion is... Where is it? First reading of Senate file number 47, an act relating to local government aid. Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Douth moves that the rule there be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate file number 47 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That is my motion. This bill is the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund money to local governments. According to the federal government, we can distribute up to $841 million to local units of government around the state so that they can defray and offset and pay for the costs that they've had associated with their reaction and response to the coronavirus. This is an incredibly important bill. The Senate has passed this. I don't know exactly what the vote was in the Senate, but somebody will hand it to me shortly. This was very bipartisan. I think communities are waiting for these funds. All four caucuses have met and talked and agreed to this bill. You know, this wasn't exactly probably what anyone would have written themselves, but it represents a really great compromise on, you know, making sure that we get this money out the door quickly and get it to these local units of government who have the costs. I'm told that the Senate passed this bill 62 to 4, very broadly supported, very bipartisan. The fastest way that we can get this money in the hands of local units of government is to suspend the rules now, bring this bill up for immediate passage. It literally could be on the governor's desk this afternoon and we could get this money out to local units of government. And I know that every community is waiting for this money and anticipating passage of this bill. So I don't think there is any opposition, meaningful opposition to this bill. It is all federal dollars. It does not increase our deficit in any way. This is just getting those federal dollars out to local units of government as quickly as possible. So I am not going to ask for a roll call right now. I'm going to wait until the majority party responds. If... I don't think this is controversial, so if we can bring it up and pass it, let's just do a voice vote, suspend the rules and pass it quickly and get it to the governor's desk. So I'll let the majority party speak. If he doesn't want to, I would like to speak again to ask for a roll call.
The member from Aiken, Representative Luick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly support suspending the rules in this case. Literally daily, I have conversations with the local units of government within my district as I believe probably all the colleagues here deal with. It is incredibly important. We did some things early on in the regular session that attempted to help hospitals, businesses, all kinds of things. One group that was absolutely left out was local units of governments. When I go to my county courthouses in my district, they had to reshape things. They had to do all the things literally that hospitals did as far as segregating, shifting things. They put... They had to lay people off. So this is just... They have been, as we used to say in the sailing world, they've been sucking wind for quite some time now. And this just gives us an opportunity to act quickly and demonstrate that here in St. Paul, we get it and we're not going to leave our local units of government behind. So I would certainly urge my colleagues to support this motion. Thank you.
I am informed by the Chief Clerk that a roll call is automatic because the motion is to suspend the Constitution. So I'm not sure who wants to go next. We have two more GOP who would like to speak and the Majority Leader. Majority Leader Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just ask members to vote no. I'm happy to do a little wrap-up after all Republican members have had a chance to speak. But essentially, this bill is in Ways and Means. There was one informational hearing in the Senate. They sent it over. House members have not had a chance to wane in committee to examine whether this is a good idea or not. And there certainly is some consternation about this formula and how it's been created. And so I think having a committee hearing and weighing that out is an important step. The Senate really didn't do that. And I think just having... Giving House members a day or two to look at this, examine it, and decide whether this makes sense for us is worth the time it takes to get it done right. And so I do oppose the motion to suspend, but I know that this is an urgent issue that we will be needing to take up before we leave.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, I do support the motion to suspend the rules and take this up. Having spoken to a good number of the cities, townships, and my own county, they have been following this. They have been watching what's going on in Washington. They have been expecting that we will act. They have seen what the federal government has asked us to get out to them, and they are encouraged. And once again, they're looking to us to make sure this is done correctly and quickly because this COVID-19 pandemic has really considered... Has caused a great deal of problems for everyone who lives in these various localities. All the way down to the townships, I have a good number of townships in my district. I think one of the highest of the seven county metro members. Those townships are watching. They are encouraged by what the federal government has sent their way. And I would encourage us to do this with great alacrity. Thank you.
The member from Lyon, Representative Swazinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. You know, I think we've heard stories across the state of local communities preparing, concerned about that worst-case scenario tsunami of COVID cases that may come up. You know, one particular that I think caught some headlines, and I just want to remind the body as they're listening at home and listening here, is the Appleton Prison. And there's a number of counties that gathered together in cities and hospitals to try a partnership because they really, truly were concerned about that potential of that tsunami that was coming. And I think one of the things that they did is they pooled their resources, pooled their dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars came out of the county coffers with the idea that that was going to be needed to help serve our communities and help serve potential patients. So, you know, these dollars would help do that. And I think, you know, I appreciate Rep. Winkler, but I think we can get this done today. I really do think the Senate has passed. Obviously, those senators did their due diligence. Not that I trust the Senate, but I do trust getting dollars to local units of government, locally elected officials for costs that they concerned. And I'd appreciate a green vote.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I heard from my cities about this as well. They are very anxious for us to get this done. The language of the bill says that the cities must provide their certification by June 22nd in order to get the money through by the end of the month, and they are very anxious to make that happen. So I don't, with the leaders, all four leaders agreeing, I think that's something Minnesotans want to see, and I'm grateful that the leaders took the time to make this happen. And so I think with the, all four leaders agreeing and the urgency of the deadline on June 26th, I'm hoping we can get this done today. Thank you.
The member from Anoka, Representative Scott.
Madam Speaker, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I've just encouraged members to vote in favor of this motion today. This is really important funding for our local communities of government and local units of government. And I know just for Anoka County alone, it's millions and millions of dollars, more than $43 million to Anoka County, and they are in need of this funding. And I know I was contacted by them today to say, please, please vote for this. I know they said that they're trying to get ahold of every member from Anoka County to encourage them to vote in favor of this agreement that was, I mean, we all know that if you don't have your word around the legislature, then you don't have anything. And if all four leaders have agreed to this language, then we need to support it. And it's been well-vetted in the Senate and everybody's seen it. Everybody's seen the numbers, everybody's seen the runs, what it means. They've had opportunity to read the bill language. And we need to not mess around with this and get the funding to our local units of government. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Traverse, Representative Backer.
One of the things, yeah, Madam Speaker and members, I would stand to support it. One of the things with local government, I represent seven counties, 42 communities and 101 township. These folks were asked to partner with the governor, with us, and say, hey, we have a potential crisis of 10th degree, and they did what they needed to do. We need to do what we need to do and say, hey, you listened to state government, you did what you needed to do and you, and we appreciate that. And for us not to support this right now, and I've been in touch with several county commissioners, and you represent seven counties times five, and then 42 towns and all these townships, you have a lot of elected officials. So this is the right thing to do now. They didn't question the governor when the governor said, hey, we have this crisis. They said, we're going to protect our citizens. Now we need to step up and do this now. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Washington, Representative Jurgens.
Speaker, thank you, Madam Speaker. Quite honestly, I was surprised to hear the majority leader recommend a no vote. This to me is a no-brainer. The cities, the counties, the townships, they're waiting for that money. We were hoping that we would be able to get this out sooner. There's no reason for a delay. Dakota County is waiting on over $50 million, Washington County over $30 million. I've been hearing from county commissioners, from city administrators, mayors. There's really no good reason to delay this. And I urge members across the aisle to join us today. Vote yes to suspend the rule so that we can take this up right now and get this money out to the cities, counties and townships. Thank you.
The member from Shisago, Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I just wanted to correct the record just a little bit. This language, my understanding, was agreed to over the weekend. The Senate did hold a hearing in their Finance Committee on Monday. They're way ahead of us on this. And our cities and townships and counties need these funds to be made whole. They are in rough shape. As we all know, not only is our state facing a deficit, but our counties and cities are in trouble. We need to get these resources to them and we need to do it quickly. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from St. Louis, Representative Listegard.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this was agreed upon with the Senate, with the House, Democrats, Republicans, everybody's working together. We all know the critical need, and it is going to happen. And so for this to be put on there today when you know it's going to be in Ways and Means is nothing more than playing a political game in my mind. And you know that it's going to happen, it's going to go through Ways and Means, it's going to get vetted, and it's going to come back to the floor, and we are going to pass it. So I would just ask that just let it go through the process, and we'll be passing it this week. Thank you.
Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I just want to reassure all members that this $841 million package for local governments is very much on the agenda for passage this week. Having a hearing in Ways and Means to review it, have House members have an opportunity to see it heard. The Senate, as I said, Representative New, did have a hearing, but it was informational only. They're not actually using their committee process right now. So to actually have some appropriate customary legislative process for people to weigh in and share their views is important. I know that a lot of cities and counties very much want this money to go out. Some cities and counties think that there are better ways of distributing this money and having an opportunity in Ways and Means to have that heard by House members rather than just taking the word of the Senate that this is all set to go is a bare minimum of public process that we should engage in. And members can be reassured that this bill will be moving out of the House of Representatives, and we will have every bit of an opportunity to vote on it. But we should be better informed as a body. Before we do so, I ask for a no vote today.
Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. You are correct. This is a very important vote. You know, I understand Representative Listegard's concern that this should go to committee. I anticipate he will be voting against the other two bills this afternoon that did not go to committee. And, you know, that's how special session works. We move fairly quickly. This language has been so vetted that we notified our local units of government over the weekend via email how much money they were likely to get from this agreement. This was agreed to late last week, and this money has been sitting for months. We probably should have sent this money out to local units of government during regular session. I, for one, was advocating that we do it then. I don't know why this has been sat on and not acted on sooner, but I have grave concerns about making sure that this is not played games with. And I appreciate Representative Listegard's comments, and I couldn't agree more. Members of the Ways and Means Committee received an email today at 10 o'clock AM saying that this bill would be on the agenda for Ways and Means and that there would be an amendment prepared for this bill dealing with the governor's supplemental budget. It will be posted, and they will let us know when it's available. That's what the email says. Political games are when you take something so well-agreed to and attach other things onto it that are not agreed to. And frankly, if we're going to attach the governor's supplemental budget onto this bill, we will be increasing the deficit in the state of Minnesota. That's not something that's responsible by either party. And when folks at home get frustrated as to how the legislature doesn't work well together, this is exactly the sort of thing that frustrates them. We have a bill in front of us that everyone agrees to. There is no substantial dissension on this bill from anyone. Townships, cities, counties are waiting to get this money. They've been waiting for a month and a half or two months now to get this money. The Senate passed this bill 62 to 4 yesterday. You can't get more bipartisan than that. Just to review a little bit of what this bill does, in this bill, it's $841 million of Federal Cares Act money that will be distributed to local units of government. Counties will receive 55% of that money, and the remaining 45% will go to cities and townships. That works out to counties receiving between $121 and $126 per person, per capita in their counties. And cities will receive $75.34 per person. Townships with a population greater than 200 will receive $25 per person. And townships with a population lower than 200, that money will come out of the county portion of the allotment. Hennepin and Ramsey Counties are not included in this. They were included in a direct appropriation in the original Cares Act bill from the federal government. They've already received $350 million, something like that was a large number. Now the rest of the counties are left waiting. So Hennepin and Ramsey County already got their money. The rest of the counties in the state have had the expenses, have had to make the adjustments, have had to absorb those expenses into their budget. They're waiting to get reimbursed, they're waiting to get made whole. And unfortunately, here we sit on a bill that's well-agreed to by everyone, and now it appears that the majority party might be playing politics with the bill. I'm going to ask some questions. If Representative Carlson L. would yield for a question.
Representative Carlson L., will you yield?
Yes.
He will yield. Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Carlson, we did get this email, or actually Ways and Means members did get this email. Is there an amendment to this bill being prepared for Ways and Means this afternoon? And is that an amendment to add general fund expenditures, the governor's supplemental budget, or some portion thereof to this bill? And can you enlighten us on that?
Representative Carlson.
Yes, Madam Speaker, there is an amendment that's being prepared that will be posted as soon as it's available. It will be discussed this afternoon in Ways and Means, but there will be no action taken until tomorrow morning. We've scheduled the meeting for 8:00 AM. So it's in progress, and I've talked to Representative Garofalo and told him that we will post the amendment as soon as it's available.
Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Carlson, if he would yield for one more question.
Will you yield, Representative Carlson?
I yield.
He will yield. Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Carlson, can you tell the body what that amendment will do? Obviously, someone, I assume you, has asked that that amendment be drafted. You're obviously aware of it. Can you, it has not been posted yet, but can you tell us what instruction was given to nonpartisan staff? What were they told to draft? What will the amendment do?
Representative Carlson.
We've been working with the administration, MMB, and the amendment will contain not all, but much of the governor's revised supplemental budget.
Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. That is the rumor that we had heard. And you just heard confirmation that Democrats now are going to play politics with this bill and attach things that are not agreed to, things that have not been vetted. And frankly, I think this puts this money in jeopardy to local units of government. What people at home want us to do is pass a clean bill and get it out the door as quickly as possible. They want, they like when we work together, and they like when we do our jobs. Would Representative Garofalo yield for a question?
Representative Garofalo, will you yield?
Yes, I will.
He will yield. Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Garofalo, you are the Republican lead on the Ways and Means Committee. Can you enlighten us to what you expect will happen or give us your opinion of this situation?
Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker and Representative Dow, now you know better than to ask an open-ended question of that to me in public, but I will, I'll do my best to be disciplined. What I expect is going to happen is that the agreement that the four caucuses have reached on this matter is going to be successfully blown up because the governor is upset. Governor Walz is upset that the four legislative leaders and the four representatives of the caucuses went out and did their job and went out and reached an agreement. And he doesn't like that. So as has been going on for many weeks now, what the governor's office is doing is they're trying to get the legislature to fight. They're trying to get House members to fight with each other, Senate members to fight with each other. Republican and Democrat, they are trying to divide us and get us to fight with one another. The reason for this is that if the legislature fails to reach an agreement on these items, the governor gets to make these decisions. He gets to take the federal funds, and he gets to appropriate them where he wants. So again, Hennepin and Ramsey County have already gotten their money. It's the other 85 counties that are getting shortchanged. Under the agreement that is reached by all four caucuses, what we are doing is we are agreeing to take money from 85 counties in all the cities around Minnesota and give extra money to Hennepin and Ramsey County. Under the formula that's being allocated right now, Hennepin and Ramsey County are getting more money. And so the dispute, what's going on today is the governor is upset, he doesn't want the legislature to work together, so he's...
Representative Garofalo, please recall that we do not arraign motives, and it's the subject matter that's in dispute and not personalities. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thought that motives only apply to members of the legislature. I think I can question the hell out of what Governor Walz's motives are. I'm pretty sure about that, but I can pivot to another part of the conversation. So it is important that members realize that if this bill is amended in Ways and Means with the language that's been supplied, it's going to blow up the agreement. We have reached an agreement on $841 million. And a lot of members have talked about what this means to local units of government. Allow me to give people the opportunity to explain what the local units of government are going to use that money for. They're going to use that money for things like economic support, which I want to give my compliments to Representative Barcourt. He insisted that there be a floor in this bill for economic support. This means grants for small businesses and local communities. This means rental assistance and landlord assistance so we can stop evictions from happening. And this is doing it rather than from a command and control mindset of allowing our local units of government to customize solutions for their individual cities and their individual counties, to reimburse them for their personal protective equipment. These are all things that have worked together in a bipartisan, bicameral agreement. And it is, at a time when there is enough conflict going on in our state, this is something that was to demonstrate Minnesota that we can work together and get something done. And so Representative Dow, to answer your question of what I expect is going to happen, what we're going to see in Ways and Means, what I expect will happen tomorrow, there's going to be another victory for polarization. It's going to be another victory for appealing to base politics, it's going to be another victory for conflict, and the losers are going to be the 70% of that state that wants the extremes to shut up and for us to get our job done. That's what's going to happen, Representative Dow, in my opinion.
Representative Dow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Garofalo is sure opinionated today, but the reality is Representative Garofalo is 100% right. That's exactly what's going to happen. Would Representative Listegard yield for a question?
Representative Listegard, will you yield?
I sure will.
He will yield. Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Listegard. I have a lot of respect for you. I consider you a friend. I was moved by your comments, and I actually agree with you 100% that I don't want this bill to be played politics with. My question for you is, were you aware of the amendment? I mean, you made some statements in your comments that you assumed this would go to Ways and Means, it would get vetted, that you knew that it had already been agreed to and that we would pass it out honoring that agreement tomorrow or the next day. Were you aware that this bill is planning to be amended in Ways and Means, adding some unagreed-to language, some supplemental spending in the governor's budget that's not been agreed to?
Representative Listegard.
Madam Speaker, Representative Dow, obviously, I don't get the emails that Ways and Means does, but I did know that it was going to be vetted. I think that this goes back to Ways and Means. You guys have a serious, robust conversation, talked this through. When I say that, do I believe that these are political games? I sure do. I just think it's all about positioning. I don't know what the, I don't know the full details of what the amendment is going to be. So therefore, I wouldn't be able to comment whether it's good or bad. It needs to go through that process. You guys need to hash it out in Ways and Means. Then it comes back, and we become more informed. And I can guarantee you what, I will be watching Ways and Means so I can see it firsthand. And I would encourage everybody to see it firsthand. So if you're asking me if I know, no, I don't know everything, and you know that. What I do do is base my decisions on my heart. You know darn well that I'm going to fight for my district. You know that what this money means to our communities, and we're going to pass it, regardless if it's today, or tomorrow, or Friday. It will pass. And the political game is about, how do we know it's going to blow up? You're telling me that it's going to blow up. I don't know that it's going to blow up. I mean, so if this amendment gets attached and it goes back to the Senate, then it blows up? See, that's what this is all about. People aren't putting, they're putting politics before people. This money needs to go out, it needs to be vetted, and if the amendment goes on and you guys hash it out, it comes back, we have another robust conversation. If it does pass off the floor, it goes to the Senate, then they have a robust conversation, and then they vote on it. But I guarantee you what, I will be voting yes when it comes to the floor whenever it does to give money to my districts.
Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Listegard. I've got good news for you. You can vote right now yes, and the bill will be here on the floor. So I appreciate that you want to get this passed, and the best way to do that is right now. I'm giving you the opportunity to vote yes right now on the Minnesota House floor to get this bill to the governor's desk. I'm sure you're aware, if the bill gets amended in Ways and Means, that bill will not be the same as the Senate version. The amendments that are being discussed have not been agreed upon by the four caucuses. We are under a verbal agreement that things that come to the floor will be agreed upon by the four caucuses. I think all the leaders agree that this legislature operates best when we operate under those sorts of guidelines because it forces us to actually work together instead of sniping at each other. So, you know, obviously, I am alarmed that this bill is planning to be amended with the governor's, you know, according to the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, that this bill will be amended tomorrow morning after the bill is, the amendment is introduced today with what he described as much of the governor's supplemental budget, which has not been agreed to. We cannot afford, we do not have the money for. It will put us into a larger deficit, and it most certainly will put this bill at risk of not passing into law, not making it to the governor's desk, and this money not making it out to our cities, townships and counties. If Representative Listegard would just yield for one more question.
Representative Listegard, will you yield?
Yes, I will.
He will. Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Listegard, I'd like to know your own opinion. Do you want this money to, and I know you want the money to get to our townships, to our cities and our counties. Do you want this bill to pass clean without other things attached to it, things that have not been agreed to? Or are you okay with us attaching unrelated provisions to this bill?
Representative Listegard.
Madam Speaker and Representative Dow, and let me say that I respect you two. You fight very, very hard, and I do respect you. But here's what I'm going to tell you, this will pass. Whether it's today, tomorrow, or Friday, it will pass. Whether it has an amendment or not, I can tell you that the people are going to get their money one way or another.
Representative Dow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Listegard. I appreciate that. I appreciate your passion. If you listen to Representative Garofalo's comments, he believes that the governor does not want this bill to pass. And while I agree with you that people will get the money from this bill in their local governments, that is certainly possible, there is no scenario where they will get more money... will get more money than this and where they will get it with more flexibility than this. If we do not pass a bill, which Representative Garofalo believes that the governor does not want us to pass a bill, he believes that, uh, the governor wants us to fight with each other, not pass a bill, because if that happens, then the governor can spend this money on his own and he can do it how he wants to. So if he doesn't like our very generous distribution of this dollars, you know, generous for Representative Liz Legard's district and, and really every other member of the legislature, um, he may give a, a ton more money to, uh, you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul. He may give, uh, he may hold back a large portion of this. I understand that during the negotiations, one of the, one of the, the administration's holdups were, um, that the administration wanted to actually hold back at least $100 million of this money, uh, just in case, uh, for other purposes. Now, just like there's a, a floor in this bill, um, that's, that cities and counties have to spend a certain amount on, um, uh, economic relief, um, there is a ceiling in the federal bill that says we can spend up to $841 million. This bill spends all of that and gets it out in what we think is a very fair distribution. If we let the governor do this, that is a ceiling, but it could be 741, it could be 641, it could be zero. Um, and, and the best way for us to move forward is to pass a clean bill, uh, to do that today, if we pass this bill the way it is right now, this is the same language the Senate used to pass this bill, it'll go to the governor's desk this afternoon for his signature. He will sign it. I guarantee you he'll sign it. Um, if he doesn't, uh, you know, he's going to have some political problems. That's how popular the funding is in this bill, right? There is an expectation that people want us to do our jobs here. Why are we playing games? We're going to send this bill to Ways and Means and amend on some funding for the governor's, uh, supplemental budget? Bring this governor's supplemental budget here to the House floor and let's vote on it. Let's debate it. Send it to Ways and Means Committee by itself. Let's do our jobs. At what point in this legislative session did the House Democrats decide, we're not going to do our jobs? We're not going to have hearings on bills, we're not going to have hearings on COVID, we're not going to have hearings on the governor's modeling, we're not going to do our jobs. That's all I've heard all session long. House Democrats are not willing to do their jobs. And when Senate stepped up and did their job, passed this, this bill that we've already agreed to, I literally sent, sent emails to my cities, counties and townships over the weekend, last weekend, saying, this is how much money, uh, you're likely to get if this agreement is passed into law. And we expect it to be passed on Monday. Nope, bill didn't come up Monday. It wasn't even introduced in the House. We were surprised. I think it got introduced Tuesday or maybe Wednesday. Um, we, we were so surprised, I think we drafted our own version of the exact agreement language and we put it in. But we're not playing games, we're not bringing up our language, we're literally bringing up Marquardt's language. We're bringing up his bill for passage. It's a Senate file, but we all know what that means. We're not playing games here, we just want the money out the door. My question is, why don't Democrats today want the money out the door? Why don't they? What's the answer to that question? Why don't Democrats want this money out to local governments? Or, or better yet, to Representative Garofalo's point, why doesn't our governor want the money out the door? Why does he want us fighting with each other? Representative Winkler, would you yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Winkler, did the governor intervene in this? Did he ask you to, to amend his supplemental budget onto this bill as a vehicle? Did he ask you to do that?
Representative Winkler.
Uh, Madam Speaker, Representative Dowd, no, the governor did not.
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Then it's awfully interesting why you want to amend the governor's supplemental budget onto this bill, which is agreed to, which is clean, which everyone agrees to, which cities and counties are waiting for the dollars to get distributed. They've already expended much of these expenditures. They've had to deal with a lot of the COVID stuff that we have. And they're dipping into their reserves and their budgets to cover that up or make up for it. And they're waiting for these dollars. So you weren't asked by the governor to do this? Why haven't we seen the governor's budget here on the House floor, his supplemental budget? Bring it! Send it to Ways and Means. Let's have hearings, let's talk about it, let's debate it. Bring it here to the House floor, let's offer amendments to it, let's debate it, let's figure out what's important. And in addition to that, we have a $2.5 billion deficit right now. So while I know our governor is, uh, wanting to spend more money and I know he wants to increase the deficit, imagine what that will do to our, uh, bond rating. The other big issue that's being discussed right now is our, our bonding bill. And our bond rating will be adjusted likely before that bonding, before those bonds are issued. And I guarantee you the bond houses will be looking at our deficit and what our plan is to deal with our deficit. So we have a, a governor who wants to spend, I don't know, $130 million, $150 million of additional spending on top of the two and, two and a half billion dollar deficit? And, and somehow House Democrats don't want to bring his budget here to the floor by itself, so it looks like today, by their own admission, they're going to amend it onto a bill that everyone has agreed to. I think that's the definition of playing politics, frankly. And I don't know what that does to our agreement that all four leaders and all four caucuses have to sign off on things that come to the House floor. Does the governor not believe in his own budget enough that it couldn't stand on its own? We have to insert it into something else? I want to tell you, I've had two concerns this session. One is about the governor's emergency powers and not necessarily that the governor himself is acting unilaterally. My concerns are actually more related to the fact that the legislature has been AWOL. No hearings, no, I mean, I can't believe that there hasn't been a hearing on every single one of the governor's executive orders. Whether they're right or wrong, this isn't about that. It's literally about the legislature doing its job. Bring up every one of the executive orders, let's have a hearing, let's get the same information, let's get the experts in, let's have them tell us why this executive order was put in place. Let's look at the different options. And if it makes sense, let's pass a bill and put it in statute. But literally, House Democrats, this session and this special session, have been AWOL. They are not doing their jobs, period. And there is, that is not in dispute. Those facts are not in dispute. Point me to the hearings we've had on all of the governor's executive orders. They haven't happened. And now the governor wants us to pass his, well, he doesn't want to, he's not asking you to do it, but for some reason, you want to amend his budget onto a bill to help cities and counties and townships? My other concern has been deficit spending. We have a $2.5 billion deficit that I think people think is likely to get larger. In our last actual revenue that we received last month, the report that we received on the 10th said that we had 20, I think it was $20 million of additional, uh, deficit added on just last month. This thing, because of COVID and the fact that these businesses have been shut down, the, the governor's had many, many Minnesota businesses shut down through his executive orders. We have a huge loss of revenue. We've lost $4 billion worth of revenue already. $4 billion! I already talked about the fact that, you know, that's $4 billion just for us, but that's only a small piece of the economic activity that it takes to generate $4, $4 billion. The economic loss is probably $40 billion to Minnesota businesses, to Minnesota families, to family budgets, to paychecks. But, but we can't have a hearing in the Minnesota House of Representatives on that. And we're going to consider amendments this afternoon that, you know, aren't even posted yet to, to amend on a, a, you know, the governor's supplemental budget when we had an agreement on an underlying bill. I mean, this is not the way government should operate. This is not the way the legislature should operate. And when people at home are wondering why things didn't work in regular session and why things didn't work in special session, you have to look no further than the House Democrats' inability to take action on anything. Anything! It's actually shocking. You want local units of government to get their money? Agreed to. Representative Stevenson, Anoka County, $43 million. Representative Marquardt, Becker County, $4.2 million. Representative Wolgemont, Benton County, $4.9 million. Representative Eklund, Cook County, $730,000, just for the county. Your cities will get more than this. Representative Claflin, Dakota County, $52 million that we're withholding from Dakota County. You want them to get their money? Vote with me on the suspension of the rules. We'll bring the bill up, we could pass it in 15 minutes. It'll take 10 for the roll call. This bill will be on the governor's desk this afternoon, probably by 4 o'clock. He can sign it today, this money can be out the door tomorrow. But no, we're going to send this to Ways and Means and we're going to debate putting the governor's supplemental budget on this. You know why I'm shocked about the spending? You know why I'm shocked about the deficit? There hasn't been one conversation, meaningful conversation about reducing the deficit. Nobody's interested in talking about it. I've been talking about it until I'm blue in the face. During regular session and this session. Nobody wants to talk about reducing spending to reduce our deficit. Do you know we have a constitutional obligation to have a balanced budget in the state of Minnesota? And because we lost $4 billion due to the governor's shutdowns? We now have a huge budget deficit. And what's the response from this legislature? We want to increase that. You know what the real number they want to increase it by? $335 million. That's the real number. Everybody thinks, not me, but everybody else thinks, that would be really reasonable if we went home only increasing our deficit by $335 million. On top of a $2.5 billion deficit. I can't tell you how irresponsible that sounds, saying it out loud. I hope it sounds irresponsible to you and I hope it resonates with you. And in Ways and Means Committee, when this vote comes up to add an amendment for the governor's budget, vote no! Vote to not play politics. Vote to send this bill to the floor clean. You could do it right now, but it sounds like the majority is, uh, intent on blocking this money from getting to local units of government. But vote to send this bill to the floor clean. I don't know what's going to happen. Senate going to go home on Friday? They're talking about it. You amend this bill, there's, there's likely a good chance this money doesn't, that this bill doesn't get passed. Senate did their job, they passed it. They did it with Democrat votes, 62 to 4. Senate somehow can do their job. But if this bill doesn't get passed, and Representative Liz Legard, I appreciate your optimism that this money is going to make it in the hands of our local units of government, but I see no scenario where your cities and your counties get more money if this bill doesn't get passed. And there's a chance they may get none at all. Because if we don't do our job and we don't pass this, Representative Garofalo very eloquently laid out what will happen. The governor will spend this money on his own without us. And I guarantee you, it won't be as good for your city and your county. Well, maybe, maybe it will be for Democrats and maybe that's the game here, I don't know. I hope not. I hope nobody would play games with this bill. But unfortunately, here we are. By their own admission, the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, by his own admission, they're going to add an amendment to this bill to put a large portion of the governor's supplemental budget onto this bill. Not agreed to, not vetted, not been here to the House floor for a vote. It's not how this place should operate. And this money for cities and counties is in danger of not making it in their hands. And, and I can't believe I'm watching House Democrats drop the ball like this. But this is your opportunity. This is a vote to suspend the rules, to bring up the language the, the Senate passed already. And then we'll immediately, when this motion to suspend the rules passes, we'll immediately bring up the bill, we can pass it and get it at the governor's desk today. This is your opportunity to not play games. This is it. This is your opportunity to not play games. You want to play games? They'll be happening in Ways and Means this afternoon. Stay tuned. Please vote to suspend the rules.
The member from right, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, as I've been listening to this debate, uh, I really do have a sorrowful heart. And I hope members would reconsider those that were considering voting no to vote yes to suspend the rules. Members, over the, the last several days, including over this last weekend, as a member of the, the Public Safety Committee and the Judiciary Committee, we've had a series of bills come through these committees from Minneapolis legislators. And these bills with, authored by Minneapolis legislators, have had a passionate testimony from people impacted by the, the recent events in Minneapolis and St. Paul. And yesterday in the Judiciary Committee, uh, just as the most recent example, we heard several bills, one of them authored by Representative Gomez, one of them authored by Representative Hassan, and one of them authored by Representative Noor. And I'm, and as I was listening to, uh, Representative Gomez, Hassan and Noor advocate passionately for their communities, there was discussions regarding emergency and vitality and economic rebuilding and building relationships and rebuilding the community and preserving livelihoods. And all of these, I strongly agree with. And I understand where these members who've had devastating impacts to their communities are coming from. But in the same time, all of our communities across the state of Minnesota have been impacted, whether they be town, very sparsely populated townships, municipalities and counties. And we have the same passionate love for our communities that was expressed the last several days for Minneapolis and St. Paul. And so, members, I would hope that you would view this with the exact same lens. The dollars that we're speaking of here have already been agreed upon and there's no reason to delay. There's no reason to play politics, which it appears is going to happen here, by attaching unrelated bills and topics. And I would, as I'm listening to this, the, as Chair Carlson described what's going to be amended on, I'm thinking to myself, well, what if we were to amend the governor's supplemental spending bill to Representative Noor's bill, which is titled Emergency Assistance for Damage Due to Civil Rest? Why would we do that? Why would we want to attach completely unrelated bill? You know why, members? If that were to happen? It'd be because of politics. And that's what's happening here. So, Madam Speaker and to those rural Democrats, understand what's happening here. Our communities that are not in Hennepin and Ramsey Counties are severely negatively impacted by the result of COVID-19. And here's an opportunity for us to fight for our communities, to get the dollars that have already been passed by the Senate out to the hands of our local officials. There's no reason to delay, especially when we now know it is 100% purely motivated by politics. And members, I will conclude with this. As a, an ordained reverend, I'm, I teach the Bible and this past weekend, I was going through the, the Book of Colossians on Sunday in my, uh, teaching. And there was a verse that we read. And from Colossians, it reads, "But if ye have bitter envying and strife in your hearts, glory not and lie not against the truth." Lie, L-I-E, lie not against the truth, because this wisdom descendeth not from above, but is earthly, sensual and devilish." So if there's envying strife and strife, that is not something good. And that's clearly what we can see is happening here. There's strife and division and derision that is going to happen when an agreement is going to be pulled back, bait and switch, once agreed upon to, to change the terms, that's strife. But instead, as the verse goes on, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure and impieable, gentle and easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy." and without hypocrisy." And that's the opportunity we have here, is to have these dollars go our impartially, peaceably, that have already been agreed upon, to all of the rest of the communities that are outside Hennepin and Ramsey Counties. And I would hope, members, that we can do that rather than allowing for division to bog us down, and then to have the, that would then result in the governor, once again, unilaterally making decisions on how dollars should be spent and how policies should be set. I, it's been how many months now that the legislature has, for the most part, been neutered by the executive branch? And I just hope that we don't allow this opportunity to exert our rightful place in the Constitution. So, members, please vote green to suspend the rules. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sorry, Madam Speaker. Took me a minute to get unmuted. This conversation is amazing to have Representative Dowd stand there and talk about not doing your job is just stunning. If you look at the history of this session, the Republicans have done everything they can to stop this session, to try to derail legislation.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Representative Dowd, cite your point of order.
This is questioning the motives of members.
Representative Considine, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to question motives, merely point to the history that can be looked up of the session and how little we were able to accomplish. And frankly, listening to Representative Lucero just now was infuriating, because I remember on the last day of session, him standing there for an extended period of time telling us about his prom date and arguing with himself about which school that she went to, why we would care where his cousin went to school, I have no idea. But again, you can look this up.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Representative Dowd.
I'm rising for a point of order under Section 124, personalities not permitted in debate. This is absolutely inexcusable for him to question the motives of members to stand and talk about, you know, about somebody's discussion on another bill. If he wants to blame somebody for not getting anything done, he should blame the majority in this chamber.
Members, we need to stick the debate to the topic, not the personalities of the executive, not the personalities of the majority or any particular leader or any particular member, but the topic of the bill that's before the House. I will, Representative Dowd, strictly enforce the point of order that you have raised. I find the point of order well taken. Representative Considine, to the substance of the motion.
Okay. A correction then, because Representative Dowd has several times said the bill before us. If the bill was actually before us, we would not need to suspend the rules. So that is incorrect. The other part that I would just like to correct is that he keeps saying that the governor will get to spend this money. That only happens if the Republicans take their ball and go home. If we stay in session and do our jobs, which the Democrats want to do, that won't happen. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Goodbye.
Members, there is a House rule that requires that everyone who wishes to speak be recognized before those who wish to speak a second time be recognized to speak. Everyone who is now seeking recognition has already spoken, so I will pause for a moment to see if I get any texts or hands raised of somebody who has not yet been recognized who would like to speak before we start round two. Hearing none, the member from Lyon, Representative Swedzinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, Representative Winkler talked and was asked a question, and whether or not the governor had called him to put the supplemental budget on to this piece of legislation, which it sounds like it's going to happen. You know, I'm going to ask the governor.
Representative Swedzinski, I would ask you to confine your remarks to the substance of the motion and not personalities.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the reminder. No, I would just encourage folks and encourage the governor to not change the substance of this bill in committee. Allow it. Call the folks in leadership and ask them, do not change the substance of this bill in committee. We have an opportunity to do what's right for rural Minnesota today, for 85 counties that did not have to fight. Hennepin and Ramsey did not have to fight by the inclusion of something else into this bill for this money. We believe in one Minnesota, representation across the state that is equal, not two counties get it, the rest can wait. So while the substance of the bill is good, it treats counties across the state. Four leaders agree to the substance of this bill.
Representative, Representative Swedzinski, the substance of the bill and not the personalities. When we're talking about other members, that's personalities, and what they believe and don't believe, and what they say and they don't say. The substance of the bill. The member from Aitken, Representative Lewick.
Thank you, thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker. Probably time to just back up and pause here a little bit and simply understand what this motion is about, the substance, and that's to suspend the rules to allow a bill or a, you know, a package of money that has already been awarded from the federal government directly to Ramsey and Hennepin County. I represent two of the 85 counties that were left out. Unfortunately, our folks in Washington DC, we're not wise enough to try to send this money directly down to everybody in Minnesota as opposed to via the governor's office. So, let's consider this. Really simple, plain language, so that the people that are listening to this can understand what a poison pill is. That's something that comes in from a legislative standpoint that will very likely blow up the matter we're discussing, and that is $840 million that the federal government appropriated as one and was intended to go down to aid the counties, the cities, and the townships in Minnesota. And to add anything to encumber that, to delay that, and very likely just poison the possibility of even moving it forward, to say is disappointing. Frankly, it's reckless. You know, when, when we had the issues with public safety here in the metro area in Minneapolis and St. Paul, the counties, particularly law enforcement, while they didn't send people, they did, unhesitantly sent support down to those very two counties that have already got their money to help with that problem with public safety. They didn't waste any time, they simply did it. They took stuff out of the trunks of their car that they used for COVID-19, which this bill is all about, packed it up and drove it down to help their brothers down here in the metro area. So here's a question I've got for the colleagues, and it's here today in the House, and, and obviously, consider this. The governor appears to have a strong desire to get in the middle of this bill.
Representative Lewick, the substance of the matter is in dispute. The bill that's before us, the motion of how to proceed, but not the personalities, not the motives of other actors in or outside of the legislature. Representative Lewick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly wouldn't question the motives of the, of the governor. His, his interests, I think, are the, those are the interests of Minnesota. But again, a rhetorical question to the colleagues, particularly my colleagues in rural Minnesota. This, to me, looks like a pretty clear choice, and think about this, pretty clear choice. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll use myself as an example. Am I going to represent the, the interests of my two counties that were left out in the CARES funding? Or am I going to represent the interests of the governor? Think about that. Regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, and you're from rural Minnesota or the, or the other counties, with the exception of Ramsey and Hennepin, who already got their money, this is pretty clear. This vote before us is a pretty big question as to whether, who is really being represented here? Well, I can tell you, I represent the two counties out of the 85. Those are the people that sent me here to speak and cast a vote. Governor's going to have to paddle his, his own boat on this one. With that, Madam Speaker, I would just urge my colleagues to do a affirmative vote on this, and let's get this thing out to the people that really need the money. Thank you.
The member from Washington, Representative Jurgens.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I rarely speak on issues before the body, and even more rare do I speak twice. I'm wondering if Representative Claflin would yield for a question.
Representative Claflin, will you yield?
Yes.
She will yield. Representative Jurgens.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Claflin, you and I both represent portions of Cottage Grove. We got a letter today from the city of Cottage Grove that was expressing their support for this CARES funding, and they're asking for a prompt distribution of the CARES funding. Do you think prompt means voting today at our first opportunity? Or does prompt mean, let's send it back to Ways and Means and see what we can attach to it, and may, we may or may not get back to it?
Representative Claflin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Representative Jurgens. I did see that letter from the city of Cottage Grove, and I have received other letters from other cities that I represent as well. And we all do want to get this money out as quickly as possible. I'm still considering how I will vote on this. We want to get this money out to our communities as fast as we can. We also want to make sure that we are getting money out in the right ways. We have to make sure that we can respond to the right needs of our counties. So I am still considering how I will end up voting. We need to get this money out to our cities, so.
Representative Jurgens.
Thank you, Representative Claflin. And you notice, I didn't ask how you were going to vote, because that wouldn't be proper. But the facts are that the city of Cottage Grove is set to get $2.8 million from this funding, and they're looking for this money promptly, not when we can get to it. And as Representative Garofalo said, and Representative Dowd said, if this goes back to Ways and Means and the governor's supplemental budget gets attached to it, we may never see it. These cities might not see it, and they're waiting for it. $2.8 million for the city of Cottage Grove, $31.7 million for Washington County. I think that prompt means at the first opportunity, and today, right now, this is the first opportunity. So I urge all members who share representation of Dakota County and Washington County, like I do, let's keep them in mind. They want this, they want this CARES funding. It's right in front of us. It's right here. It's ready to go. Let's vote yes to suspend the rules, and let's get this money where it belongs, this federal money, to the cities, the counties, and the townships. I know that Washington County, Dakota County, the city of Cottage Grove, Hastings, and Afton, they're watching. They're listening, and they want to see how their representatives are representing them today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Stearns, Representative Teis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really appreciate this opportunity. Today, members, I am home, because for the last three nights, in the middle of the night, we've had civil commotion going on. Our cities, my cities, St. Cloud, Wake Park, St. Augusta, have been hurting greatly, as has Stearns County. Now that we've had all this action happening, the costs have increased. We need this money desperately. Last night, or I should say this morning, at around 3:00 AM, there was a fire at our community outpost, our cop house, which is a wonderful facility for community, neighborhoods, and law enforcement, emergency folks to get together and to learn more about each other. It sustained about $1,000 worth of damage, but you better believe there's going to be deductible before that kicks in. Our cities need this money now. They're having a hard time. We're going to have to make some really drastic decisions, but to say that we have to wait to give them the money so we can throw more money onto our deficit is pretty sad. What's happening in our communities now is they're just struggling to survive. Survival is going to be so much different than it was before. Yesterday, I was on the phone with a, with a community member that I have known for 20-some years, almost in tears, because he's thinking that he's going to be out of business very shortly. This isn't something that's going to go away anytime soon. Our cities are going to be struggling to recuperate the lost revenue. And that's a whole nother story. But right now, we have the opportunity to take federal dollars that are for our communities to dish it out now. St. Cloud, Wake Park, St. Augusta, and Stearns County needs the money today. Thank you.
The member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, this is a critical bill and critical funds to our cities and our counties. And the time to act is now. We've, we all know, I think, pretty well, the devastation that COVID has caused in all our communities. And Madam Speaker, I'm wondering if Representative Bierman would yield for a question.
Representative Bierman, will you yield?
Speaker, I will.
He will yield. Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Bierman, are you familiar with what this, taking up this bill and passing it today, what amount of funds that will generate for your home county, Dakota County?
I am familiar.
Representative Bierman.
Oh, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, thank you. Representative Koznick, yes. Dakota County is looking at about $52 million. Yeah, our fine cities of Lakeville are on 4.8 million, and Apple Valley is 4.02 million. So yes, I am very familiar with the amounts, and I am also very familiar with the needs for those amounts. I've been attending regularly the county hearings each Friday, at which we discuss the need for this money and the critical nature of getting it out to the counties and cities.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Bierman.
Representative Bierman, I believe you are, come from a small business background, your furniture business, I believe. Do you know that there, our business is hurting in Dakota County? Could they use assistance?
Representative Bierman.
If he would yield.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. I think we're all familiar with the situations of business, my own included. Thanks for asking. And there's a lot of issues pertaining to business where I personally have struggled to maintain a business that is celebrating 125 years in business. And we've been through World War I, the pandemic, World War II, Great Depression, of course, all the unrest through the 60s, and the changes in the world economy. And yet, here we are in 2020, and we're still standing, third generation, very proud of that. So yes, I'm familiar with the struggles that we're having with COVID and dealing with the situation in regards to that. And my business is just a microcosm of the economy and what we've had to do. But I also know why we've had to do many of the things we've had to do, and the fact that COVID hit at an earlier time than the shutdown did. And our business fell off immediately because of the situation with the virus and people not wanting to shop and go out and continue normal economic activity. And my biggest concern now is that we don't get this right. So yeah, I have grave concerns. I've got my eye on both the business side of the economics of a small business, and I've got my eye on public health issues. And our county officials have helped me each and every week to understand the issues we're facing from a public health perspective, and understand that the needs of the community, the needs of the county, the needs of the cities, and the needs of small businesses are great indeed. So I'm ready to get this money out to the place it needs to go, but I'm also a freshman legislator who is learning the ropes of how this system works. And I hear today people standing up and saying, look, the Senate, they did this, it must be right, let's follow their lead. And I'm concerned that the next lead I'm going to be asked to follow is to follow their lead on the bonding bill. So I think we, as a House, need to take the responsibility to take measure of what they've done and to act through our committees and at least have the opportunity to hear it in committees and Ways and Means. And we can still get this money out this week, which is what I've been asked by the folks back in my district to do, only session until this money is out and pass a bonding So I'm ready to work, I'm ready to stay here, I'm ready to stay away from my small business to get the business of the people done, and ready to go to work on that this week or as long as it takes. Thank you for the question, Representative Koznick. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Bierman, you seem to have a pretty good grasp of the magnitude of the problem with COVID and the issues surrounding it, from business to individual health concerns. And you're right, the people of Lakeville and Apple Valley are watching, and they need to be recovered from, the local governments need to recover from the expenditures that they've had to stave off a further widening of the spread of COVID. And Dakota County stands to make business grants for businesses like yours, businesses like Avivo Restaurant, or they went out of business, but the next one, maybe we can act today and keep the next business, maybe your business or your neighbor's business, from going under. There's also testing and long-term care sites that the county has identified, $1 million at least, to further prevent the spread and so that people can continue with their lives and we can prevent further spread of COVID. That's what these funds are for. And so I'm glad, Representative Bierman, that you understand the urgency, and I hope that you will vote today, because the residents in Lakeville and Apple Valley are counting on you to act now. Representative, or excuse me, Madam Speaker, would Representative Claflin yield for a question?
Representative Claflin, will you yield?
Yes.
She will yield, Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Claflin, you represent a part of Dakota County, and are you concerned with housing situations in the county as a result of COVID?
Representative Claflin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Representative Koznick. Yes, I am concerned about the availability of affordable housing within Dakota County. And I'm very carefully listening to this debate and considering what will be best for the cities that I represent in Dakota County and in Washington County. I know that this money will come out quickly to help our cities and counties. I want to make sure that we have money in the right places to take care of all the problems that have surfaced for our counties, all the shortfalls that have surfaced. And I'm making my consideration very carefully for what will be best for my communities.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate your consideration, Representative Claflin. And you have two counties to weigh into consideration, so even more significant the impact of your vote in terms of dollars that will go out to people in the area. And I'm not going to ask you for the exact number, but I'm sure you're then familiar that your vote today would vote to, just for in Dakota County, provide over $1,300,000 just for emergency shelter in Dakota County, in addition to childcare funding of probably about another $1 million suggested, in addition to food and gas cards. And so as you consider, and Representative Bierman as well, and other members, these are the kinds of things that our communities are counting on us, that's what these funds were intended for. And so I urge you to vote yes to suspend the rules, and let's get this money going to our communities, to our constituents as soon as possible, because any further delay is going to minimize, probably minimize the amount of dollars that are going into your community, and that's what you'll be voting against. Madam Speaker, I wonder if Representative Hoyt would yield for a question?
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell which name you said.
Representative from Rosemont.
Representative Koznick requests Representative Hewitt to yield. Representative Hewitt.
I will, Madam Speaker.
He will yield, Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Representative Hewitt. You and I represent Dakota County. I'm sure you've heard from constituents, because you're quite in tune, and from our county. Are you familiar with any health concerns that the county would be facing with COVID?
Representative Hewitt.
Madam Speaker, Representative Koznick, I really appreciate you bringing this up, because you know as well as I do, because we've had numerous meetings with Dakota County on how important this money is, and how important it is we get it right. As you know, one of our biggest attractions in Dakota County and in my district is the Minnesota Zoo, which is going to require supplemental funding. And that's why we have to look at the whole picture here. And that is so important that we do that. I understand, and I know that we have a lot of health concerns, and that's where some of this money will go to, but we need to make sure we get it right. And I've heard it over and over again from our city leaders in Apple Valley and in Rosemont. And to be honest with you, the city of Coates, the last draft I've seen of this bill, gives them nothing. So really, I think we do have to take a quicker look at this and make sure we're getting it right. And I thank you, Representative Koznick, for your involvement, and I'm looking forward to you making sure you fight this as hard for the bonding bill, too.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, Representative, let me just break the news to you. These federal funds that we're going to vote to suspend the rules on, none of it's going to the zoo. So as you know, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Dakota County, our constituents and yours are counting on us to help them out through this pandemic. With your housing and EMT background, I think you're probably familiar that mental health is an issue, hasn't been mentioned, that Dakota County will be providing a significant amount of mental health counseling if they get this money. Our long-term care facilities, it's a health professional. I'm sure you're very attuned to those challenges in our long-term care facilities. Voting today, Representative, will put over $1 million into testing sites at these centers. And I think you also have a little bit of a housing background. I'm not going to ask you how much, but there's eviction prevention resources, probably about half the funds that Dakota County will have after their expenses are covered, will go to eviction prevention, almost $8 million, $7.6 million, to help all of our constituents in Dakota County. So these are the, this is what you're voting on today, and your constituents are watching. And so I urge you to break the partisan gridlock, stand up for your constituents, and vote to take this bill up today before the bill gets ripped apart and less money goes to your constituents, because the need is urgent. And so, members, both in Dakota County and across the state, I support the suspending of the rules to take up these critical dollars to our communities. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Wright, Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, would Representative Winkler yield for a question?
Representative Winkler? I think he will yield, Representative McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Winkler, did I hear that right, that Ramsey and Hennepin County have received the fundings from the CARES Act already? Is that correct?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative McDonald, at the risk of bringing personalities into the debate, I don't know whether you heard that or not, but it is my understanding that under a law passed by the Democratic U.S. House, the Republican U.S. Senate, and signed into a law by President Donald Trump, Hennepin and Ramsey County did qualify for direct aid under the CARES Act.
Representative McDonald.
Thank you. I should have used my words more carefully. I knew that you would say that if I said I heard it right, so thank you for corrections for me on that. So Hennepin County and Ramsey County got their money already, and I have heard many of your members, and I think you stated this as well, that we got to get this right. So let me get this, let me get this right. So you believe that Hennepin County and Ramsey County, by receiving their funds, you got it right, but not for the 85 other counties? That seems very unfair, that you have member after member, yourself included, Representative Winkler, that you said, we got to get this right. If you really are interested in getting this right, you would release the funds today to the cities and counties that needed appropriately right away. Very disingenuous to assume that the other 85 counties aren't responsible enough and/or that you got to get it right before they get their funding. I find that very ridiculous and disingenuous. And to tie this to a supplemental bill is really disgusting, in my humble opinion. If my dad was saying it was a dirty, rotten trick, you would make a torturous.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Representative Winkler, state your point of order.
Personalities in debate, Madam Speaker. Representative McDonald's arraigning motives, and he is out of order.
Representative McDonald, I'm having a little bit difficulty hearing you because of the speed with which you're speaking, but I believe that you are indicating what other members believe and presume and think. And if those were the statements you were making, that they are not permitted under the custom and usage of the House to not bring motives into the conversation. Representative McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm glad that you clarified that you couldn't hear me clearly, because that's exactly what I did not say. I did not bring into the conversation motives of any other members. So, as I'll continue, Madam Speaker, it's very unfair for the majority, at this point, to withhold funds that are very important to our cities and counties, but say it's okay for Hennepin and Ramsey. I just think that's very wrong. I think I've heard from our counties and our Franklin Township, our boards and our cities, and they're very upset that you would not really pass this today. I've spoken to them the last couple of days, and to think that you take care of Hennepin and Ramsey, but not the 85 other counties, I think it's very unfair, very disingenuous. And if you do tie a supplemental bill, even though we're in a deficit, that's even worse at this point, because you know that won't pass. And then the 85 other counties will not get the important, critical funding to deal with what we've had to deal with the last three months. So I'm sure there's nothing we can say that'll convince the majority to change their votes, but just know, very, very disingenuous, very tricky, and really a rotten thing to do. Madam Chair.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And Madam Speaker, I always appreciate when you say the member from Carver. There's two of us, but actually, there's three of us that have representation in Carver County. So myself, Representative Bo, and Representative Morrison. We all represent parts of Carver County. I, of course, represent the best part, because nobody can defend and say otherwise. But I was speaking to the Carver County Commissioners, who are close colleagues of mine, and speaking to the Carver County Administrator. And based on the runs that were developed by the four leaders, Carver County stands to get roughly $12.8 million to help out in this effort. $12.8 million to help out cities in Chanhassen and Chaska and Waconia and Norwood Young America, New Germany, Hamburg, Townships, Victoria, these are all important cities in Carver County. That's just the county number. And I guess I would always refer back to the thing that I think that we all have in common here. Every one of us up here at the Capitol has run because we want to benefit the people that we represent. And I legitimately hear that in people's voices when they speak. And we have ideological differences, I understand that. But I never question that somebody wants to do their job to help the people that they But I got to say, I'm a little shocked that we've heard that there's an amendment that's been drafted to put onto this bill that literally has nothing to do with the bill as it sits And the prevarication of members that are saying, oh, this is, we have to, they're deflecting here and there, and I find that to be very disappointing. Because the federal government, as Representative Winkler just pointed out, that a Republican Senate, a Democrat House, and a Republican President all signed this bill, passed this bill, brought it forward, put it out to the various states, broke it down here at the legislature into cities, counties, townships, that's the number. That's the number that these folks are depending on. Now, I'm not going to ask Representative Morrison to yield to a question, but she does represent a portion of Carver County. Carver County, $12.8 million. And in speaking to, again, the leadership at the board level and the administrator, and in speaking to many of the mayors and council members across the part that I represent, they are now depending on this, and they are watching what happens. They are actually texting me as we're having this debate right now, and they are encouraging us to support the motion to suspend, to pass this right now, get it to the governor right now. now, and possibly see this money distributed to the people that it was intended to go to, not to bring it up in ways and means, to tack on a hurdle that will get it to go Again, I believe that you all have the best intent for Minnesotans in mind. Let's show that we actually do. Thank you.
The member from Shisago, Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. We've clearly had a lengthy debate on this bill. And I would like to start by just pointing out a few things about what we're proposing with this CARES Act money. First of all, I've got a letter before me that members should receive. I don't know if they have already. It's from the League of Minnesota Cities, the Association of Metropolitan Municipalities, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Minnesota Association of Small Cities, and the Municipal Legislative Commission. In it, they ask us, "As you consider this legislation, please keep in mind that modifications to local services and operations to prevent and address COVID-19 are occurring for cities across the state. Many cities have undertaken significant, often costly, adjustments to local services to ensure public health and safety during this crisis." Interestingly, the amount proposed in this bill is $841.4 million. That represents about 45% of the state's share of the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund, which, incidentally, is what the federal law governing those funds recommends go to local These dollars are significant. In fact, let's start, would Representative Dowd yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Leader Dowd, can you tell me, I know that you represent a portion of Anoka County, do you know what their expected costs are related to coronavirus?
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Representative Nu. I do, I had, I reached out to them because I do represent part of that county. Before I talk, I'm going to find that text message. Before I talk about that, I want to say that, you know, this has been a, and I appreciate everybody's input on this conversation today. It's been a, you know, this was completely organic. I mean, we just heard like 10 minutes before we came in the chamber that this was likely going to get amended with the governor's supplemental budget in ways and means today. And I got to tell you, we were shocked. So for anybody that thinks there's politics being played here, it certainly isn't by our side. It appears that is by the other side, wanting to amend things onto a bill that's been agreed upon. But it is, you know, certainly not, and I always feel like the best debates and conversations come when things are completely organic. I think members just literally want this money to go out the door. And when we've got an agreement that all four caucuses have agreed to, I think people are shocked that, you know, we're not doing that. We're, you know, maybe going to be amending something else onto it and not living up to our agreements with each other. And frankly, that's not what makes this place work well or function well. But I want to make a quick plea because we're not quite to a vote. I think it's going to happen fairly quickly. But if you are watching at home and you are a city council member, or a mayor, or a county commissioner, or somebody that works at a county who is waiting on these funds, Democrats in the House are about to block your funding. And I am so shocked that this is actually happening. Pick up the phone and call your members off. Better yet, send an email because I'm not sure that they're going to get a voicemail in time. Send an email. I'm sure that, you know, you probably have the cell phone numbers of your local members that represent you. Send a text message to their phones right now saying, "Are you kidding me? Do not block this. Do not amend something else onto it. Let's get this money out the door." And the reason that is so, and I'm serious, please do that and do it right now because this is our opportunity to stop this bill from getting blocked. If you're watching at home and you're a city council member, a county commissioner, heck, if you're just a citizen that understands that this is the best thing to do, text, email, or call your member's office and let them know that this needs to be passed and it needs to be passed right now. And do it immediately because this debate's probably coming to a close here in the next few minutes and there's going to be a vote. And I don't want anybody to block this funding. I don't want to have to say that Democrats are blocking your funding for local units of government. I still can't kind of believe that, you know, we saw that on, was it Monday? I think the Senate tried to bring this bill up over in the Senate and the Senate Republicans brought the bill up. Bill had been agreed to, language had been agreed to, the dollar amounts had been agreed to. As I said, I had already sent out emails to my local units of government, letting them know how much money they should anticipate when this bill passed. Of course, it's preliminary and until it passes and until the governor signs it, nothing's a guarantee. But, you know, this thing was happening. And then on Monday, Republicans tried to bring up the bill and Democrats wouldn't put up the votes to suspend the rules to bring it up. And now today in the House, the same thing is happening. Democrats won't put up the votes to suspend the rules. I actually thought it was changing because last night, Democrats in the Senate, or excuse me, yeah, Democrats in the Senate, I guess I don't know, I guess they probably had enough dazed that they didn't need to suspend the votes yesterday. So I'm sorry, I was trying to give Democrats the benefit of the doubt, but I'm, but just as I'm thinking about it aloud right now, the Senate did their three separate readings on three separate days and they passed the bill yesterday. They didn't need Senate Democrats to put up the votes. But when the bill was actually up, you know, I assume maybe Senate Democrats would have continued to block that. I don't know that. But they did on Monday. Senate Democrats blocked the bill from coming up Monday. But when they actually brought the bill up for a vote in the Senate, it passed 62 to 4. I think you could probably pass a bill in the House today that said, "Today is Wednesday." Today is Wednesday, right? And it probably wouldn't pass by that kind of a margin. I mean, if you can get that kind of agreement on a bill, this is as broad bipartisan support as you can get. And we're trying to get it out as fast as possible to these local units of government. So please, 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 pick up your phone, send a text, make a call, send an email to your representative and tell them, "Please do not block this vote. Please do not block this bill. Please, please, please do not block this funding." But to your question, and I want to answer your question directly, and this is why it's so important. I reached out to one of my counties and they said, it was Anoka County, it's a larger county. I think, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now on how much they were supposed to get, but I think it was a similar number. But Anoka County thought that they would have already expended and anticipate expending and having expenses related to the coronavirus relief in their county, just the county alone, they have already expended and anticipate to expend through the end of the year $43.7 million. That was the answer that they gave me when I reached out and said, "How much have you spent and how much will you spend this year on coronavirus relief?" $43.7 million. That's one county. Now, yes, that's part of the seven county metro area, and yes, they're a larger county. But these are real dollars and they are literally spending out of their reserves to meet these expenditures. We should have, we could have, and we should have passed this bill during regular session back in May and gotten this money out. But here we are, over a month later, and, you know, Democrats in the Senate blocked this bill on Monday. Finally, Republicans in the House passed it without it getting blocked yesterday. But it looks like today, Democrats in the House are going to block this bill from getting passed today. And this is that important. I mean, you've got one county that is going to expend $43.7 million just this year, and much of that already expended as their response to coronavirus, and they need this federal dollars. It's just sitting in account here at the state waiting to go out. We can't, you know, we're not spending it. It hasn't been spent. It's just sitting in an account. But these counties are incurring expenses, cities, townships, and we're sitting on their money. And we're trying to get it out. You know, thank you to the members who are going to vote today to get this money out the door, but shame on you if you're going to try to block this funding from getting to our local units of government. They're partnering with us. They're doing much of the work. A lot of state programs are administered by counties. And at this time, when those programs are so needed, we're going to shortchange them by blocking their funding? Please reconsider. This isn't politics, but please do what's right. Let's get this money out the door. Don't amend something onto it from the governor's budget. Bring that up separately and let's debate it. You have enough votes to pass that. Why would you ever want to amend it onto something? You have enough votes to pass the governor's supplemental budget? You don't have to play games like that. Thank you, Representative Nu, for the question.
Representative Nu.
Thank you, Leader Dowd. I appreciate your explanation. And incidentally, I can tell you, Anoka County is slated to get $43.4 million of federal funds through this. Madam Speaker, would Leader Dowd yield for another question?
I think he will. Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Leader Dowd, do you have additional comments about that funding?
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just very quickly, as you said it, it made me think of this. In addition to the $43.7 million of expenses they've already spent and that they will spend, they also anticipate that they will have a loss of revenue of $7.8 million for their county. So not only are they spending out of reserves, they're losing revenue. And we all know, we can't use the $2.1 billion of federal money to backfill lost revenue for the state, right? We've lost $4 billion already. Just that one county alone anticipates they'll lose at least $7.5 million. But that makes the urgency of this even that more important and the reason we need to get this money out the door. They cannot use this money to backfill that $7.8, what did I say? $7.8, whatever it was. They literally will have to eat that out of their reserves. But while they're eating that, they also have to bankroll and float this other money that we haven't reimbursed them for, for a month and a half now. So let's do this today. Let's get it out. Sorry for interrupting again, but thank you for the question.
Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Leader Dowd, for those comments. You know, I represent a relatively small county, Shisago County. However, we're also a property tax poor county. We have among the smallest commercial industrial base in the state, which makes, which puts us in a difficult position often with, when it comes to tax revenue. My little county, Shisago County, would receive $6.7, almost $6.8 million with this relief act. That makes a huge impact on our small counties and cities. That is a huge impact on our relatively small budgets. Interestingly, I've been in touch with my county as well. They also have incurred costs related to COVID-19. However, this funding not only supports directly the counties, but it also allows our counties to use this to support local businesses. Our local small businesses have been decimated over the last few months of this shutdown. They have been decimated. I've talked to especially, you know, my local restaurants and salon owners. I talked to one salon owner quite a bit, and she owns her business herself. She's a woman, small business owner in Lindstrom. She's worked so hard to build her business. And just a few years ago, she was able to purchase her own salon and open her own shop. This shutdown has devastated her. It has devastated her business. And now that she is open to be able to be open again, guess what? She is on her feet all day long, every day, six days a week right now, to try to make up for what she has lost over these months. Devastating. But in my county, the funding that is not directly needed for those county services, my county intends to make those dollars available to our local businesses, to help support them and to help to, to help to make whole what they have lost over these months, to help them to at least be able to pay their electric bills and to pay their rent on space that they have not generated a penny of income for. Members, it is time we get this money to our counties and cities and townships. Madam Speaker, would the majority leader yield for a question, please?
He will yield. Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The answer to this question was, very carefully threaded the needle earlier, and so I'm going to ask it a little bit differently. Representative Winkler, I'm wondering if anyone who represents the governor or MMB asked a member of the House majority to amend this bill with the governor's supplemental budget?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Nu, you know that I can't be part of every single conversation that every single member of the Democratic majority would ever have with any member of the administration. And therefore, I cannot tell you with certainty whether or not the governor or anybody who works for him, the thousands and thousands of people who work for him, have ever talked to one of 75 members about his supplemental budget. That would be very challenging for me to answer with any definition. I would say, however, that the Minnesota House of Representatives decides how money gets spent. We have the power of the purse. It is a fundamental obligation of the Minnesota House of Representatives to initiate tax and bonding bills and to work with the Minnesota Senate to decide how state appropriations are going to be spent, regardless of whether they are received from the federal government or whether they are received in revenue from the people of Minnesota. This bill coming over from the Minnesota Senate is going to go to the Committee on Ways and Means. The Committee on Ways and Means is the committee that decides whether or not the appropriations make sense in the context of the larger budget. The Committee on Ways and Means can take public input, they can receive amendments, and the committee chairs and others with the most expertise in the Minnesota House have the opportunity to weigh in and decide on whether or not the $841 million aid to local governments bill is in the best interest of the state with respect to its budget. After that hearing, the bill will come back to the Minnesota House of Representatives on the floor, and we can decide together whether or not it's a good idea to spend the money in that way. What happened today is that Republicans brought a motion to suspend the rules and take up the bill, made a number of personality and motive attacks on the House floor, and then decided that they are the ones who are choosing whether or not the Minnesota House of Representatives should act or not. We believe that there should be a process for public vetting of proposals that are coming through the Minnesota Legislature. And when a bill has received one informational hearing in the Senate, it is not sufficient for members of the House. And so as members of the House, with a responsibility to look at the issues that are in front of the state and make decisions on behalf of our constituents and our districts, having one hearing in the Committee on Ways and Means seems like a bare minimum approach to making sure that we are doing the right thing for the people of Minnesota. And there are differences of opinion about whether this $841 million appropriation is actually fair or based, and it's certainly not based directly on need. We've been treated to lengthy discussions about how little COVID is affecting rural Minnesota, and now we're hearing all about all the expenses rural Minnesota is taking on and paying for it. The city of Minneapolis under this bill receives another $32 million on top of what Hennepin and Ramsey Counties have already received. I think it is worthwhile to have a discussion in committee about whether or not this bill is fair and whether it accommodates the needs of the people of the state in an equitable way across regions. That is the job of committees, that is the job of the House. It is not the job of the Senate to decide this for us, and it is certainly not the job of the governor to tell us how to spend money, and that is not what has happened in this case.
Representative Nu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Along with lots of other words there, I think we got our answer on whether or not the governor's office or administration asked for this. And I think the answer is likely yes. It's inconceivable to think that the House would be amending over, an over $300 million spending bill onto this without a discussion with the governor's office. It's inconceivable. It doesn't happen. And interestingly, we're talking about this $300 million supplemental budget as though somehow this is, this is giving us additional transparency with this bill and with this language. There is a hearing scheduled for 2:30 today. That amendment is not posted. How is this transparent? That amendment is not posted, and it's scheduled for a hearing in less than a half an hour. This is not transparent. For those of you watching from home, I would say, "I am sorry. You are seeing politics at its worst right now." We had agreement from all four legislative caucuses to help our local counties and cities and townships. And it's being held up to play politics with a supplemental budget that frankly is completely unrelated. You know, we were just told that it makes sense, we need to see if this makes sense in the context of a larger budget. Well, we're talking about two different things here. This is apples and oranges. This is apples and oranges. We're looking to spend $840 million and not spend it—we are looking to give our local counties, cities, and townships the ability to use these federal funds, $840 million of federal funds. We're giving that ability to our local elected officials. And we are saying here that we believe that in order to do that, the House majority wants to amend on over $300 million of additional deficit spending of state dollars. This is unconscionable. Madam Speaker, would Representative Carlson L. yield to a question?
Representative Carlson L., will you yield to a question?
I yield.
He will yield. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Carlson. Who asked you to amend the governor's budget onto this bill?
Representative Carlson.
Madam Speaker, Representative New, my first discussions about the governor's supplemental budget were last Saturday. We did a quick walkthrough, and that was with the MMB. Myron was the one that did a walkthrough. And Madam Speaker, I think what probably—I'm looking at my notes from Saturday—I think that people should know a couple of things as we move forward here in response to Representative New's question. One is that there's 13 bills on the agenda for Ways and Means today. This is the last bill that will be on the agenda, and it's informational. And I made it very clear that there would be no action on the amendment or the bill. It would be laid over until tomorrow, when we've got a meeting scheduled at 8:00. I responded to that earlier. But some of the things that could conceivably—or will probably be in the amendment—and I'm not going to say this is an exhausted list—corrections. We all know that there's some major issues with our prison facilities, and so there's an appropriation in the governor's supplemental for corrections. C cap, there's aid to counties, something like 8.8 million. There's funding for direct care, the wasting disease, the State Patrol, some funding there, the crime lab, there's some funding for veterans, there's the Minnesota Zoo, which we've probably all received some emails in that regard, the fear that the zoo cannot survive without a supplemental appropriation. Now, that's just some of my very rough notes. A lot of numbers have been thrown around. The part of the bill that dealt with bonding would not be—in the amendment will not be included. From Saturday's discussion, the total cost of the supplemental that we will be considering or some number close to it is about $130 million. When people are throwing around numbers like $300 million and what have you, that is just not correct relative to the supplemental. If the bonding would have been included, it wouldn't have been close to $300 million either. Then it would have been $219 million. So I think that information is important for people to understand in terms of what conceivably will be on the table with the amendment. We bid provide information. Things were breaking rather rapidly in the last few hours, so we did put information out at 10:00 this morning that there would be an amendment that would be considered and that we would post it as soon as it's complete. And so that we will do. And like I said, it's the last item on the agenda. It's the 13th bill that will be up. So with the discussion that we've now had, that'll be later today. But I will see to it that it's posted as soon as we have it available.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And would Representative Carlson yield for another question?
Representative Carlson, will you yield for an additional question?
I will yield.
He will yield. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Carlson. Again, along with lots of other words, it sounds like you did have a conversation with the MMB Commissioner Myron Franz, and who, of course, is with the governor's administration. So I would ask very pointedly—if—who asked you to carry this amendment?
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Representative Winkler, state your point of order.
Madam Speaker, personalities are not permitted in debate under Mason Section 124. We've had a very strict interpretation of that ruling this day at the request of Representative Dowd, and I would ask you to find that Representative New's line of questioning is out of order.
Advice, Madam Speaker.
State your advice, Representative Dowd.
Madam Speaker, this is not questioning motives. It's not anything like that. She's just asking to get facts out on the record. Did someone ask you to put this amendment on, or are you doing it under your own volition? If the answer is he's doing it on his own, then I think the question is relevant as to why you want to amend a bill with a budget thing that frankly is not relevant. All of the things that Representative Carlson just went through have nothing to do with COVID Act dollars for local units of government. They have nothing to do with this bill.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Representative Dowd has risen under advice on a point of order, and he is far afield of that.
Members, the custom and usage of the House is that we neither arraign motives nor we draw personalities into debate, and that we confine our remarks to the substance of the proposal before the body. And in that vein, Representative New, do you have a question for Representative Carlson relating to the substance of the bill subject to the motion?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And yes, again, I think that we've heard lots of things about the bill and certainly surrounding the bill. Most of what we heard just now was not about the bill. And my question is, where is this bill coming from?
Representative Carl.
And so my question—I apologize, Madam Speaker. I was just pausing. My question to Representative Carlson is, yes, was this language requested by the governor's office? Was it requested by the speaker or Chair Carlson? You are carrying the amendment. Did you decide to do that on your own?
Representative Carlson.
Madam Chair, I will answer by saying I'm my own person. I did mention that my first conversation relative to the governor's revised supplemental bill was last Saturday, a Zoom meeting at 9:00 AM. There were other legislators on the call, including the Senate Finance Chair. And we did a walkthrough of what the revised supplemental bill would be, and that's what I shared with you when I—just from my very rough notes, and I don't want to say that what I shared with you was everything when we did the walkthrough, but it was some of the more relevant ones that I happened to jot down. But there probably will be other things in the amendment. When you ask who I had conversations with, it started with Commissioner Franz on Saturday, and the last conversation I had with another member was with Representative Garofalo to give him a heads-up that there was an amendment being considered. We did send out at roughly 10:00 AM this morning information to members of the Ways and Means Committee on both sides of the aisle. So they got that information. At the same time, I didn't play any favors. The Democrats received notice that there would be an amendment that would be considered in Ways and Means at the same time that the Republicans got that information. And that was about 10:00 AM. As we all know, we're in a special session, and things are breaking rather rapidly. And we're simply trying to be responsive with a very tight timeline during this special session. So that's about all I have to say on at this point in time. But we did make it very clear that this afternoon it would be informational. We will have available nonpartisan staff, and Commissioner Franz and one of the other people from MMB will be present as well to answer any questions relative to the governor's supplemental. But there will be no action on it until tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I—and I appreciate that it sounds like there have been significant conversations with Commissioner Franz, and I would assume that that has lots to do with this. Madam Speaker, would Representative Marquardt yield to a question?
Representative Marquardt, will you yield? Representative Marquardt, will you yield to a question?
Madam Speaker, yes, I will.
He will. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Marquardt. And first of all, Representative Marquardt, I want to thank you for the hard work that you did in negotiating this bill. I know that there was a great deal of time and energy put into making sure that we had the best bill that is fair to our counties and our cities and our townships. So thank you for what you did in negotiating this very good bill. And my question—and I'm sorry that this is being politicized—but did you now agree to have this bill amended?
You know, members, we really are violating the custom and usage of the House. I would recommend that you have a conversation with Representative Marquardt. Representative Marquardt, if you'd like to answer that relates at all to the substance We have lost him. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Unfortunately, we lost Representative Marquardt.
He's—I'm sorry, he's back. Representative Marquardt, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. I hit the wrong button here. I apologize for that. I did not hear the question.
Representative Marquardt. Representative New, will you repeat your question to Representative Marquardt?
Let's try again. There we go. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And Representative Marquardt, I don't know how much you missed, but first I would like to reiterate that my thanks for all that you have done in negotiating this bill. I know that there was a great deal of time and effort put in to making sure that this bill was as strong as it could be, particularly for our local counties and cities and townships. So thank you for all that you did in working on this bill. And my question, Representative Marquardt, have you been engaged in the negotiations of now changing this bill? Is this something that you would recommend or agree to, this amendment?
Representative Marquardt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Representative New, yes, I have been involved with this amendment, and I think you're going to hear more in Ways and Means on how this amendment is going to strengthen and make this a better bill and how it's going to help make this a better state. And so I'm glad we're having this discussion in Ways and Means. This is $841 million. This is a huge bill that will affect a lot of people. And I think this amendment that we'll discuss will make that stronger. But I think a bill like this—and I think the public deserves—to be able to weigh in on a bill this size that's going to impact all 5.6 million people in this state. So I do hope members vote no on the suspension of the rules because the public needs to weigh in. They need to hear what this bill and what the amendment is all about.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Representative Garofalo yield to a question?
Representative Garofalo, will you yield to a question?
Only because I have to, yes.
You don't have to, Representative Garofalo. You can say yes or no.
It's the custom and usage that legislators submit to the questioning from their colleagues. So the answer is yes.
He will yield. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is interesting. So we were just told that—well, I would just ask. Representative Garofalo, this has been a tenuous—this is a tenuous time. And one thing that I very much appreciated during legislating for COVID and more recently is that we've tried very, very hard to work together with Democrats and Republicans, with the House and with the Senate. There's been a lot of agreement on things that we've done, this bill included. We've put a lot of time into making sure that we all agree on good policy. And now this bill is being changed. And Representative Garofalo, I would ask if you've been included in negotiations on amending this bill and if there is agreement, as there has been in the past and is the current custom, if there is agreement by the four caucuses and if you've been included in those negotiations to change this bill?
Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker and Representative New, I have had an opportunity—that the four of us, members of the legislature who were leads on the COVID-19 local funding issue were Senator Dietzick, Senator Rosen, Representative Marquardt, and myself. I have had conversations with a majority of the other three—of the other three members who have been in discussions, and there were no negotiations on this item involving the four caucuses. So the answer to that question is no. I do want to say that Senator Dietzick, Senator Rosen, Representative Marquardt did a great job in negotiating this compromise. It is very—it was not easy, and any compromise piece of legislation, there's going to be good things and bad things. And I think the concern I have, Representative New, is—I don't—well, I shouldn't say that. So I'm just going to say that I have not been privy to those negotiations because there have been no negotiations. These are—these amendments are coming from outside that negotiation process.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess that's what I assumed the answer would be, that there was a bill that was agreed to, that—a good bill to support our local counties and cities and townships that was agreed to by all four caucuses, that was agreed to by Republicans and Democrats, that was agreed to by the House and the Senate, that is now being changed by the House majority, unilaterally, one body, one caucus has decided to change the rules on this. And I would—again, I would say once more that this is politics at its worst. This is politics at its worst. In order to provide federal funding, federal dollars, to our local municipalities, and doing so, of course, again, in accordance with the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund at 45% going to our local municipalities, we are being asked to increase our state budget deficit. Mind you, we have done nothing to try to decrease that deficit during this budget. But now we're being told that in order to get these federal dollars to our local municipalities, that they want us to support increasing our state budget deficit. This is unconscionable. It is politics at its worst. Members, I'm going to make a last-ditch effort here, but I think folks should know what they are voting on today. As we are looking to suspend the rules, to pass— As we are looking to suspend the rules to pass the CARES Act, I think members should know what they are voting for. And so, I'm just going to make sure that a few folks have seen the runs, and they know what their counties or cities are supposed to be getting with these dollars. So, to be clear, I just want to make sure Representative Christensen knows that if she votes no today, she is voting to deny the city of Stillwater $1.5 million. $1.5 million, that's just for the city. That's not Washington County. That is for the city of Stillwater. And I suspect the city of Stillwater is similar to some of my areas, that there's a lot of small business. And imagine what could be done to help those small businesses beyond what the city needs with that $1.5 million. So, Representative Christensen, I hope that you have seen the run and are aware of those numbers. Representative Katisa Whitoun, if you vote no today, the city of Eden Prairie will be losing out on $4.7 million. Again, that is just for the city of Eden Prairie.
Representative New, I just want to remind you that it's not personalities that are in this debate. It is the subject of the motion. If you'd like to refer to locations of funding, that would be within the custom and usage of the House rules. But calling out individual members and indicating what you believe that their vote today means is talking about motives. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. While I'm not sure that I'm questioning anyone's motives, in fact, I'm confident I'm not questioning anyone's motives, I am happy to point out that voting against this bill today will deny the city of Maple Grove $5 million. $5 million. Again, that's just for the city of Maple Grove. The city of Minnetonka, voting no today on this bill, the city of Minnetonka will lose out on $4 million. The city of White Bear Lake will be losing out on almost $2 million. For a single city, $2 million. These are real dollars that have a huge impact on our local municipalities. Members, I implore you, do not play politics with this bill. Remember what we've done here. We've done such remarkable work, again, working with Republicans and Democrats, the House and the Senate. So much work went into negotiating this bill, and now, we're going to throw it away. We're going to throw it away because this is a poison pill. Asking the other three caucuses to increase our state budget deficit in order to get these federal dollars to our local municipalities is a poison pill on this bill. It's a poison pill that means that our counties, our cities, and our townships are not going to get these dollars. Remember that when you vote today, and I encourage everyone to vote yes to suspend the rules. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from right, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am only chiming in a second time with something, Madam Speaker, that you just said, that it is against the custom and usage, or it is questioning the motives when it is describing the result of a vote. So, Madam Speaker, when saying that a vote will deny Stillwater millions of dollars, or I think it was 4.2 million, if I just heard, will be denied by voting against the motion, that is not questioning the motives. Because, and the reason I'm speaking up now is because this is the exact thing that Representative Winkler did to me last term, last year, when he called a, when he said that a vote means And he explained to me, well, Representative Lucero, it is certainly within the order to be able to say what a result means, what a vote means. And so, I just, it's pure hypocrisy to have just heard Representative New be told that it is against the custom and usage, which, so you and Representative Winkler are in direct opposite. You're conflicting with what each other are saying. So, what you just said to Representative New is the opposite of what Representative Winkler told me last year. Incredibly hypocritical. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I had hoped that we could have a better debate today than the one we've had. But obviously, when passions are high and emotions are strong, people's behavior isn't the best. And fortunately, this institution, the House of Representatives, has a opportunity to make a significant difference in the lives of the people of Minnesota in all parts of it. Not just one region, not just rural, not just metro, not just urban, not just those affected by COVID or not affected by COVID directly. We have the opportunity to do a great deal. As others have mentioned repeatedly, the eyes of the world are on Minnesota and our response to the cold-blooded murder of one of our own citizens. And among the other issues taken up in a time of pandemic, civil unrest, and a very stark and painful look into the reality of racial oppression in our state, we also have an opportunity and a necessity to continue to do our work together and pass budgets. So, we've had a long discussion today. I won't belabor the point any further. If an amendment is adopted in committee to add items from the governor's supplemental budget, we'll have an opportunity to talk about how C cap rates and funding help rural Minnesota. We'll have an opportunity to talk about how MFIP helps rural Minnesota. We'll have an opportunity to talk about direct care and treatment operations help rural Minnesota. We'll have an opportunity to talk about how counties that were mispaid by DHS can get reimbursed. We'll have an opportunity to talk about transit safety, the State Patrol, veteran suicide prevention, preventing and ending veterans homelessness. Those are all topics of debate that we can have if this amendment goes on in ways and means. And we can continue to serve the people of the state of Minnesota in the way that we were elected to do. Doing it through a hearing, doing it through the correct process, rather than a last-second motion to suspend the rules in the middle of an ongoing workday, is not the way to do it. We will have an opportunity. We can disagree on points and who's benefited by what bills, but following proper order, by going to committee, having a hearing, and coming back to the floor is the best way for us to weigh in as the Minnesota House, rather than deferring to a supposed agreement among leaders or a decision by the Minnesota Senate that this is the right thing to do. We have to do our own order, make our own decisions, and a no vote today, which I ask for, allows the Minnesota House of Representatives to function as a body making its own decisions in its own way.
Closing argument, Representative Douth. The clerk will take the role on the motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of Senate File 47.
Acem.
Acem, no.
Acem, no. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye.
Bonner, nay.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, yes.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, no.
Becker Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, votes no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson A.
Carlson A, no.
Carlson A, no. Carlson L.
No.
Carlson L, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no.
Claflin, pass.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Claflin, pass.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daveney.
Daveney, no.
Daveney, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Draskowski.
Draskowski, aye.
Draskowski, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson, excused. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hertas.
Madam Speaker, you acknowledged my desire to speak on the floor, but you never called on me in more than an hour. Hertas, votes aye.
I apologize, Representative Hertas, we're in a roll call.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katisa Whitoun.
Katisa Whitoun, no.
Katisa Whitoun, no. Kosnick.
Kosnick, aye.
Kosnick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podeen. Kunish Podeen. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Long.
Long, no.
Long, no. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Marquardt.
Marquardt, no.
Marquardt, no. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, no.
Moeller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy, excused. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor.
Noor, no.
Noor, no. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, no.
Olson, no. O'Neil.
O'Neil, aye.
O'Neil, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, no.
Palowski, no. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sandsted.
Sandsted, no.
Sandsted, no. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Pass.
Sundin, pass. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, no.
Tabke, no. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel?
Vogel, eye.
Vogel, eye. Wagenius?
Wagenius, no.
Wagenius, no. Waslowick?
Waslowick, no.
Waslowick, no. West?
West, eye.
West, eye. Winkler? Winkler, no. Wagamot?
Wagamot, no.
Wagamot, no. Zhang Jie?
Zhang Jie, no.
Zhang Jie, no. Zhang T.
Zhang T, no.
Zhang T, no. Yuakim?
Yuakim, no.
Yuakim, no. Speaker Hartman? Speaker Hartman, no. Claflin?
Claflin, yes.
Claflin, eye. Detmer? Detmer?
Detmer, eye.
Detmer, eye. Eklund? Eklund?
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Johnson? Johnson?
Johnson, ah, Johnson, eye.
Johnson, eye. Kunish Podine?
Kunish Podine, no.
Kunish Podine, no. Listlegard?
No.
Listlegard, no. Nornis?
Nornis, eye.
Nornis, eye. Sundin?
No.
Sundin, no. Tice?
Tice, eye.
Tice, eye.
There being fifty-eight ayes and seventy-four nays, the motion does not prevail.
Senate File Number Forty-seven was referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. First reading, Senate File Number Forty-nine, an act relating to public safety. The bill is being referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Reform Finance and Policy Division. First reading, Senate File Number One-O-Four, an act relating to public safety. The bill is being referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Motions and resolutions. There are copies of the non-controversial motions at the House Desk and online. If there is no objection, we will take action on these motions first. Hearing no objection, the motions prevail.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule there be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number Fifteen be given its third reading and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler?
Madam Speaker, members, this is the motion to suspend to take up Senate File Fifteen and put it on for passage. This is the amusement park bill ironically, and this was something that we already passed during the regular session.
Representative Dowd?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask members to support the motion.
And this is an automatic roll call due to the suspension of the Constitution. The clerk will take the roll on the Winkler motion to suspend the rules to take up Senate File Fifteen for immediate consideration.
AICAM?
AICAM, eye.
AICAM, eye. Albright?
Off with that, and off we went.
Albright, eye.
Albright, eye. Anderson?
Anderson, eye.
Anderson, eye. Becker?
Don't go away.
Becker, eye.
Becker, eye. Bonner? Bonner?
Eye.
Bonner, eye. Barr?
Ah, Barr, eye.
Barr, eye. Baker?
Baker, eye.
Baker, eye. Becker Finn?
Becker Finn, eye.
Becker Finn, eye. Bennett?
Bennett, eye.
Bennett, eye. Bernardi?
Bernardi, eye.
Bernardi, eye. Bierman?
Bierman, eye.
Bierman, eye. Bowe?
Bowe, eye.
Bowe, eye. Brand?
Brand votes, yes.
Brand, eye. Cantrell?
Cantrell, eye.
Cantrell, eye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, eye.
Carlson A, eye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, eye.
Carlson L, eye. Christensen?
Christensen, eye.
Christensen, eye. Claflin?
Claflin, eye.
Claflin, eye. Considine?
Considine, eye.
Considine, eye. Daniels?
Daniels, eye.
Daniels, eye. Doubt? Doubt, eye. David's?
Eye.
David's eye. Daphne?
Daphne, eye.
Daphne, eye. Dean?
Dean, eye.
Dean, eye. Damuth?
Damuth, eye.
Damuth, eye. Detmer?
Detmer, eye.
Detmer, eye. Druskowski?
Druskowski, eye.
Druskowski, eye. Eklund?
Eklund, eye.
Eklund, eye. Edelson?
Edelson, eye.
Edelson, eye. Elkins?
Elkins, eye.
Elkins, eye. Ericson?
Ericson, eye.
Ericson, eye. Fabian? Fabian? Fisher?
Fisher, eye.
Fisher, eye. Franzen?
Franzen, eye.
Franzen, eye. Freiberg?
Freiberg, eye.
Freiberg, eye. Garofalo?
Garofalo, eye.
Garofalo, eye. Gomez?
Gomez, eye.
Gomez, eye. Green?
Green, eye.
Green, eye. Grassel?
Grassel, eye.
Grassel, eye. Grunhagen?
Grunhagen, eye.
Grunhagen, eye. Gunther?
Gunther, eye.
Gunther, eye. Haley?
Haley, eye.
Haley, eye. Halverson, excused. Hamilton?
Hamilton, eye.
Hamilton, eye. Hanson?
Hanson, eye.
Hanson, eye. Hassan?
Hassan, eye.
Hassan, eye. Hausmann?
Hausmann, eye.
Hausmann, eye. Heinrich?
Heinrich, eye.
Heinrich, eye. Heinzmann?
Heinzmann, eye.
Heinzmann, eye. Herr?
Herr, eye.
Herr, eye. Hertas?
Hertas, eye.
Hertas, eye. Hornstein?
Hornstein, eye.
Hornstein, eye. Howard?
Howard, eye.
Howard, eye. Hewitt?
Hewitt, eye.
Hewitt, eye. Johnson?
Johnson, eye.
Johnson, eye. Jordan?
Jordan, eye.
Jordan, eye. Jurgens?
Jurgens, eye.
Jurgens, eye. Keel?
Keel, eye.
Keel, eye. Cleavorn?
Cleavorn, eye.
Cleavorn, eye. Cagle?
Cagle, eye.
Cagle, eye. Katiza Waton?
Katiza Waton, eye.
Katiza Waton, eye. Koznick?
Koznick, eye.
Koznick, eye. Kresha?
Kresha, eye.
Kresha, eye. Kunish Podine?
Kunish Podine, eye.
Kunish Podine, eye. Lehman?
Lehman, eye.
Lehman, eye. Lee?
Lee, eye.
Lee, eye. Lesch?
Lesch, eye.
Lesch, eye. Liebling?
Liebling, eye.
Liebling, eye. Lean?
Lean, eye.
Lean, eye. Lilly?
Lilly, eye.
Lilly, eye. Lippert?
Lippert, eye.
Lippert, eye. Listlegard?
Listlegard, eye.
Listlegard, eye. Long?
Long, eye.
Long, eye. Lucero?
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, eye. Luick? Luick, eye. Mahoney?
Mahoney, eye.
Mahoney, eye. Mann?
Mann, eye.
Mann, eye. Mariani?
Mariani, eye.
Mariani, eye. Markwart?
Markwart, eye.
Markwart, eye. Mason?
Mason, eye.
Mason, eye. McDonald?
McDonald, eye.
McDonald, eye. Mecklen?
Mecklen, eye.
Mecklen, eye. Miller?
Miller, eye.
Miller, eye. Mohler?
Mohler, eye.
Mohler, eye. Moran?
Moran, eye.
Moran, eye. Morrison?
Morrison, eye.
Morrison, eye. Munson?
Munson, eye.
Munson, eye. Murphy? Excused. Nash? Nash, eye. Nelson M.?
Nelson M., eye.
Nelson M., eye. Nelson N.
Nelson N., eye.
Nelson N., eye. New? New, eye. Noor?
Noor, eye.
Noor, eye. Nornis?
Nornis, eye.
Nornis, eye. Navatni?
Navatni, eye.
Navatni, eye. O'Driscoll?
O'Driscoll, eye.
O'Driscoll, eye. Olson?
Olson, eye.
Olson, eye. O'Neil?
O'Neil, eye.
O'Neil, eye. Palowski?
Palowski, eye.
Palowski, eye. Purcell?
Purcell, eye.
Purcell, eye. Petersburg?
Petersburg, eye.
Petersburg, eye. Pearson? Pearson?
Pearson, eye.
Pearson, eye. Pinto?
Pinto, eye.
Pinto, eye. Poppy?
Poppy, eye.
Poppy, eye. Poston?
Poston, eye.
Poston, eye. Pryor?
Pryor, eye.
Pryor, eye. Quam?
Eye.
Quam, eye. Richardson?
Richardson, eye.
Richardson, eye. Robbins?
Robbins, eye.
Robbins, eye. Runbeck?
Runbeck, eye.
Runbeck, eye. Sandell?
Sandell, eye.
Sandell, eye. Sandsted?
Sandsted, eye.
Sandsted, eye. Sauk?
Sauk, eye.
Sauk, eye. Schumacher?
Schumacher, eye.
Schumacher, eye. Schultz?
Schultz, eye.
Schultz, eye. Scott? Scott? Stevenson?
Stevenson, eye.
Stevenson, eye. Sundin?
Sundin, eye.
Sundin, eye. Swazinski?
Swazinski, eye.
Swazinski, eye. Tabkey?
Tabkey, eye.
Tabkey, eye. Tice?
Tice, eye.
Tice, eye. Torkelson?
Torkelson, eye.
Torkelson, eye. Erdol?
Erdol, eye.
Erdol, eye. Vang?
Vang, eye.
Vang, eye. Vogel?
Vogel, eye.
Vogel, eye. Wagenius?
Wagenius, eye.
Wagenius, eye. Waslowick?
Waslowick, eye.
Waslowick, eye. West?
West, eye.
West, eye. Winkler? Winkler, eye. Wagamot?
Wagamot, eye.
Wagamot, eye. Zhang Jie? Zhang Jie? Zhang T.
Zhang T, eye.
Zhang T, eye. Yuakim?
Yuakim, eye.
Yuakim, eye. Speaker Hartman? Speaker Hartman, eye. Fabian?
Fabian, eye.
Fabian, eye. Scott? Excused. Zhang Jie?
Oh, Zhang Jie, eye.
Zhang Jie, eye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Third reading.
Third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number Fifteen.
Third reading, Senate File Fifteen. There's no, uh, what I would meant to say before that, there's no amendments at the desk. I wasn't sure that it already had its second reading. But it has now had its second and third reading, and the bill is before the House. And I recognize the author of the bill, Representative Tabkey, to the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members. This is a technical amendment, uh, techno-fix to this bill. We passed it during regular session with a vote of one-hundred-and-twenty-six to five. And all this bill does, it fixes a problem with the effective date. As amusement parks across the state are looking at opening in the near future, we are needing to be able to hire folks to be able to work in them. And the effective date currently is as of August first, and this moves it to, uh, retroactively to May twenty-eighth. So there's no substantive change to this bill whatsoever. It just adds an effective date as of the day after following an accident.
Any further discussion to the bill? Hearing none, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
AICAM?
AICAM, eye.
AICAM, eye. Albright?
Albright, eye.
Albright, eye. Anderson?
Anderson, eye.
Anderson, eye. Becker?
Becker, eye.
Becker, eye. Bonner?
Bonner, nay.
Bonner, no. Barr?
Barr, eye.
Barr, eye. Baker?
Baker, eye.
Baker, eye. Becker Finn? Becker Finn? Bennett?
Bennett, eye.
Bennett, eye. Bernardi?
Bernardi, eye.
Bernardi, eye. Bierman?
Bierman, eye.
Bierman, eye. Bowe?
Bowe, eye.
Bowe, eye. Brand?
Brand votes, yes.
Brand, eye. Cantrell?
Cantrell, eye.
Cantrell, eye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, eye.
Carlson A, eye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, eye.
Carlson L, eye. Christensen?
Christensen, eye.
Christensen, eye. Claflin?
Claflin, eye.
Claflin, eye. Considine?
Considine, eye.
Considine, eye. Daniels?
Daniels, eye.
Daniels, eye. Doubt? Doubt, eye. David's?
David's eye.
David's eye. Daphne?
Daphne, eye.
Daphne, eye. Dean?
Dean, eye.
Dean, eye. Damuth?
Damuth, eye.
Damuth, eye. Detmer?
Detmer, eye.
Detmer, eye. Druskowski?
Druskowski, eye.
Druskowski, eye. Eklund?
Eklund, eye.
Eklund, eye. Edelson?
Edelson, eye.
Edelson, eye. Elkins?
Elkins, eye.
Elkins, eye. Ericson? Ericson?
Ericson, eye.
Ericson, eye. Fabian?
Fabian, eye.
Fabian, eye. Fisher?
Fisher, eye.
Fisher, eye. Franzen?
Franzen, eye.
Franzen, eye. Freiberg?
Freiberg, nay.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo?
Garofalo, eye.
Garofalo, eye. Gomez?
Gomez, eye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, yes.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson, excused. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Witun.
Katisa Witun, aye.
Katisa Witun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresch.
Kresch, aye.
Kresch, aye. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, nay.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Meckland.
Meckland, aye.
Meckland, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mueller.
Mueller, aye.
Mueller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy, excused. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor.
Noor, aye.
Noor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam. Quam. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott, excused. Stevenson. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslewic.
Waslewic, aye.
Waslewic, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wagamot.
Wagamot, aye.
Wagamot, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Becker Finn. Oh. Becker Finn, excused. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye.
There being 127 ayes and 4 nays, the bill is passed and is titled agreed to.
Winkler moves that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that Senate File Number 45 be recalled from the Committee on Commerce, be given its second, third readings, and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the first of two motions. The first does not require a roll call vote. This is to bring House File 45 out of the Commerce Committee. House File 45 was heard in Commerce and reported to the General Register during the regular session.
Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd support the motion.
All those in favor of the Winkler motion to bring Senate File 45 out of the Committee on Commerce, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, so that Senate File Number 45 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this motion requires a roll call vote. This is the gambling control bill, board bill altered by Representative Hewitt, and I ask for a yes vote.
Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd encourage members to support the motion.
The clerk will take the roll on the Winkler motion to suspend the Constitution to move for immediate consideration of Senate File 45.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Excused. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Biermann.
Biermann, aye.
Biermann, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski.
Druskowski, aye.
Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Witun.
Katisa Witun, aye.
Katisa Witun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresch.
Kresch, aye.
Kresch, aye. Kunish Podine. Kunish Podine. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Meckland.
Meckland, aye.
Meckland, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mueller.
Mueller, aye.
Mueller, aye. Moran.
Aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy, excused. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor.
Noor, aye.
Noor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson. Pearson. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell. Sandell.
Aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott, excused. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslewic.
Waslewic, aye.
Waslewic, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Zhong Jie.
Zhong Jie, aye.
Zhong Jie, aye. Zhong T.
Zhong T, aye.
Zhong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Aye. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, aye.
Kunish Poudine, aye. Lee. Lee. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye.
Motion prevails. Clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number 45.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 45.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. Representative Hewitt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is our gambling control board bill. It came back from the Senate, a little different than what we sent it over there with. Basically, I'll go through it real quick here. Section 1 is a, requires organizations licensed by the gambling board to provide an electronic copy of any audits that are sent over to the commissioner of revenue. Section 2 allows our veterans and paternal organizations that are not operating under the 501(c)(3) to go ahead and grant short-term loans to their parent organization. They're not able, like our hockey associations, our football programs can do that already, but because these are quasi-government organizations, they're not allowed in our statute to do that. Section 3 waives the star rating that we put on our gambling organizations. What we're doing is waiving it for fiscal year '20 because most of their revenue that they collected had to go in expenses, so this will really knock out the star rating, and so we're going to start it up again in '21, but we waive it for fiscal year '20. Section 4 basically goes into, this is for distributors of gambling equipment and games. Right now, the state requires the games to be paid off within 30 days of the delivery or the purchase. We're going to extend that for their first set of games because many of our organizations right now have no to little cash. Section 6, licensing renewal dates during the, as far as the COVID crisis goes, we allow those organizations that when this stops, they have 60 days. To clean this up, the board would like to just extend 60 days for everybody upon the end of the crisis. Section 7 allows individual groups that have filed for a one-time gambling permit, these are like softball groups or whatever, that have the event, and now the event has been canceled. They can either apply for their money back, or they can extend that up to 400 days, which is a little bit over a year, so they can use it without any penalty to them. Section 6 extends the time our gambling managers have to get their training done by. Right now, they, basically with that, they had to do it within 60 days. Now, we're extending it to 150 days. This bill is passed by the Senate unanimously on a 67 to 0 vote. I'd like to thank Senator Karan for landing in the Senate. We'd definitely like to give Representative O'Driscoll for his hard work and bipartisanship to get this bill landed, and I can't say enough about my mentor, and I don't know what I'm going to do without her, but Chair Halverson, thank you very much for all the work you did on this bill.
Any further discussion to the bill? Hearing none, the clerk will take the role on the bill.
Acom.
Acom, aye.
Acom, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn, excused. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski.
Druskowski, aye.
Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel. Keel. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, aye.
Kunish Poudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, yes.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran. Moran.
Moran, yes.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy, excused. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor.
Noor, aye.
Noor, aye. Nornis. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.[1585.91]